Welcome to the second public hearing of the inquiry into the granting of contract number 0OOS117-18-021 by the Office of Sport. Before I commence, I would like to acknowledge the Gadigal people who are the traditional custodians of the land in which Parliament sits. I would also like to pay respects to the elders, past, present and emerging of the Eora Nation and extend that respect to other Indigenous people who are present. Today we'll be hearing from two individuals who provided expert advice during the tender process for the relevant contract. We'll also hear from our representative of Capricorn Australia Proprietary Limited, a company who submitted an unsuccessful tender for the relevant contract, and two individuals involved with Equestria New South Wales. Finally, we will hear from the Honourable Geoff Lee, MP, the former Minister for Sport. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the virtual hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about your comments you may be making to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In those circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. Today's proceedings are being streamed live and the transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it is available. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, we have witnesses appearing in person and via video conference. Can I ask committee members to clarify and clearly identify who questions are directed to and could I ask everyone appearing remotely to please state their name when they begin to speak? Could everyone please mute microphones when they're not speaking? Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so that we can all be heard clearly. Also, to assist hand side, may I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone and avoid making comments when your head is turned away. I now welcome our first witness. Thank you for joining us. Ms Townsend, could you please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name's Alex Townsend. I currently sit on the Board of Equestria New South Wales and my affirmation is I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms Townsend. Do you mind just moving the microphone slightly forward to you? Yeah, it'll make it a lot easier. A little bit, even a bit more than that would be good. Thank you.
Please.
Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I'd just like to say good morning and I'm here today as you've summoned me and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. With that then, I will open up questioning and we've resolved as a committee to share it amongst us all, but I believe Mr Latham, you'll have the first and probably most of the questions. Up to you.
Thank you Chair and thank you Ms Townsend for your attendance today. Can we just clarify the timeline by which the outdoor arena was constructed by Barry Smith Motorsport Auto at your property? Because there's been a bit of confusion in the tender documents. Barry Smith states that he was working at Wallaby Hill between May and September 2016, but it was a bit later than that, wasn't it?
I never had any commercial dealings with Barry Smith over my arenas. My dealings with the arenas were with Autosport International.
Yeah, they're a German company, but Barry Smith was their agent in Australia, wasn't he?
He may have been at the time, but I did not deal with him over my arenas.
Okay, who did you deal with?
Autosport International spent, sent their engineer over, Gert Herman, and he overseed, oversaw, sorry, the installing of my arenas with my subcontractors.
Right, so how then did you end up as the sole referee for Barry Smith Motorsport for this contract with the Office of Sport, the work at Saic describing it as an excellent result if you'd not actually had any dealings with Barry Smith?
I was a referee for the product, Autosport Surfaces.
But you must have provided, what, a verbal, a written reference for Barry Smith that was included in his tender document? His tender documents cite you as being the referee and that it says here on page five of that tender document to the New South Wales Government, "Should Barry Smith Motorsport be successful tenderer, the exact same team of subcontractors will be used for the Saic project we used on the Wallaby Hill Farm project, providing certainty of an excellent result." The contact person at Wallaby Hill Farm is the owner, Alex Townsend, and he lists all your details and a photograph of the work in progress. So what did you provide to the Office of Sport in your reference?
Nothing.
No one ever contacted you and asked you?
No.
How's the work been undertaken at Wallaby Hill? Was it an excellent result? Nothing?
No, I wasn't, I've never been contacted by the Office of Sport.
Can I ask you, Ms Townsend, were you aware that Mr Smith had put you up as a reference?
I would imagine that he would as we had an Autosport arena in the country.
Did he seek your permission before he did that?
I think I'd already done a reference for Autosport as a YouTube testimonial in any case in 2016.
But you draw a distinction between Autosport and Barry Smith Motorsport?
Yes.
So I'm asking you about Barry Smith Motorsport, not Otto.
Yes.
And so I understand that you may have verified the product, but in terms of providing Mr Smith a reference as a contractor, did he actually seek your permission as a contractor?
I don't recall him asking to have a referee for him, Barry Smith himself, but for the product, yes.
Okay, so he asked you to endorse the product?
Yes.
Do you recall that?
Not specifically, but I would be happy to.
Sorry, Ms Townsend, I think the question is, do you recall him asking your permission to endorse the product?
I don't recall the exact moment and the time and the place, but yes, I've endorsed the product on many occasions.
Okay, but did he tell you that he was intending to use your endorsement in his bid for this contract with the Office of Sport?
I don't recall exactly the details of what he asked, but he would have had my permission.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr Latham.
So you did have a conversation with Barry Smith about becoming his referee?
I would have had a conversation about thinking the arena surfaces are fantastic, yes.
Other than being fantastic, did he ask you? Did he ask you, "Is it okay to put you down as a referee for the Office of Sport tender"?
He would have, I don't recall his exact words, but I was a referee for the Autosport surfaces.
Right, and how did you know Barry Smith?
It's a small world, the horse world. I knew him through that.
Right, and you knew Stephen Dingwall who was working for him because he was the son of the President of Equestria New South Wales where you're on the board?
I knew Stephen Dingwall who was working for himself as a show jumper at his business, Cavalier Performance Horses.
Just coming back to when the work was undertaken, what's your best recollection of when Otto put this outdoor arena in?
It was in late, mid to late 2017.
Right, so Barry Smith saying the work was between May and September 2016 is not correct?
That would be the gallop track. You're talking about the arena surfaces.
Okay, so what Otto did a gallop track for you?
I bought the products from Autosport Surfaces International and installed a gallop track, yes.
Right, and in your submission to this inquiry, you said that the indoor materials were placed for the outdoor arena and that's why it had to be dug up and it was subsequently stockpiled on your product, oh sorry, on your property. At which point did you pay for the work that they'd undertaken?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. Who am I paying and which surface?
Otto, Otto, you've said in your submission without giving a lot of detail that in general, that the outdoor arena was built with indoor type materials. It wasn't suitable, it was dug up and it was stockpiled, the materials were stockpiled on your property. I'm just trying to get a handle on the process by which it had to be dug up because after they'd built it or even beforehand in partial completion, you must have paid some money to Otto?
Yes.
Right, what were those payment arrangements?
I paid them, I sent money overseas to Autosport International in various, on various dates. I think, do you want them all?
Well, no, but by the 30th of August when they'd finished the work, you'd paid them for the work, is that right? And at that point you took possession of the materials and the work that had been undertaken, yes?
No.
No, you paid them, but you didn't own what they'd done for you?
No, I had not completed, I had not completed payments.
Okay, so where were the payments up to by the 30th of August when you had a Facebook post saying that the outdoor arena had been installed?
I still had to pay for the international supervisor costs and the installation of the shaft and some other costs still to go.
Right, and were those payments ever undertaken?
Yes.
They were, so you paid in full ultimately?
Ultimately, I had paid as far, as far as I recall, I think I'd paid for most of it by the 20th of October.
Right, and at what point was it determined that the materials weren't suitable and they had to be dug up and stockpiled?
I don't remember the exact date, but I believe it was around the beginning of November.
And do you recall the site, pre-tender site visit by the Office of Sport officials, David Porter and Kevin Flynn at Wallaby Hill on the 1st of September?
Yeah, they came with the guys from Tamworth as well to have a look at the installation process.
Who were the guys from Tamworth?
There's an equestrian facility up there called the Australian Equine Livestock Equestrian Centre that were putting in a big arena and they just wanted to come and have a look and see how the process went. So it seemed logical that they'd be allowed to come visit.
Just to give you my ignorance here, Ms Townsend, your arena, is that, that's your privately owned facility first, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and do you use it, let it out commercially or do you use it just for private use?
I let it out commercially where an equestrian centre, a registered equestrian centre.
It's a business, is it?
Yes.
Yes, and were you the first person to acquire this particular technology in the state or is that the reason why people were coming to see your site?
We, I don't know that we were the first people to acquire the technology, but Autosport has a technology to it, which is the mats?
Yes.
That the other arenas or the other providers don't have. And so I think people were coming to have a look at the ebb and flow system, which is the watering bit?
Yep, got it, yep.
And then you have the mats in the auto version and the other ones, you don't have the mats and then you have the surface on top. So I think, I think there was a picture of them, wasn't there, of them standing there in the arena, but I don't think the mats were down then.
Okay, so the reason people were coming to visit your facility was because it was novel in that it had technology that wasn't otherwise available in the state?
I assume so, but you'd have to ask them why they were coming to visit.
Weren't Porter and Flynn there to check on the quality of the work in light of Barry Smith tendering for the Office of Sport funding at Saic?
I'm sorry, Mr Latham, you'd have to ask them.
But did you meet with them on that day, the 1st of September 2017?
I said hello to them as I would imagine anyone would greeting a visitor on their property, but I know Dave Porter because I compete at Saic, so I said hello to Dave and moved on.
Right, so they didn't ask you at any stage as the owner of the property how, how good this work was, the quality of the work?
The work was being carried out by my subcontractors, so I just, I don't recall the conversation, I'm sorry, Mr Latham.
So what did Porter and Flynn do on your property other than saying hello to you?
I don't know, I, I'm sorry, I had horses that I ride. I don't know, Mr Latham, you'll have to ask them.
So I'll have to ask them. And just coming back to the reference where you're listed for Barry Smith Motorsport in their tender, was there a written reference that you wrote on his behalf?
I don't recall.
No?
I don't know.
You think maybe it's just the Facebook video that was posted?
I don't know, Mr Latham. I'm sorry, you'd have to ask him. I don't, I don't recall writing one. I would have been happy to write one for the surface, it's a very good surface, I don't recall.
Yeah, and you said in, in November, the surface was dug up. At what point did you first say to Otto, "This is the wrong material for an outdoor arena and you're going to have to give me my money back and dig it up and get rid of it"?
I didn't.
You didn't?
I...
So was it?
I didn't say that to them.
No, what did you say? How, what's the process by which it was dug up in November? What was the decision-making that led to that?
Well, I live in Robertson and it has an unusually high rainfall, as we've just ascertained, and the outdoor arena didn't appear to be draining in the way that it should. And I called Gert Herman, the engineer, and said, "Is this how it's supposed to work"? And as far as I recall, he came to the property and tested the sand and said, "No, this is the wrong sand, it's got too much clay, we'll remove it and replace it."
And what date did that happen on?
I can't remember, but I'd probably be able to look it up from the rainfall charts.
Right, and at that point you were refunded your payments?
No. I was getting a replacement surface, Mr Latham.
Right, and who came in and did that work for you?
The same subcontractors that I had hired originally were then hired by Autosport International Germany and were instructed to remove the surface and replace it.
And the surface that was removed and stockpiled, how big was that stockpile and where did it sit on your property?
It sat at the back of the property where it had been mixed and it sat with other things that are stockpiled up there because it's a working farm and we have, I suppose as you'd imagine, a stockpile of sand and dirt and bits and bobs. So yeah, how big was it? I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not good at measuring things like that, but it was just probably about, I think it took about eight trucks to take it out.
Right, and was there a development consent with Windjap Caribbe Council to do the arena work in the first instance?
For this arena?
Yeah, for the work completed on the 30th of August.
It was a replacement surface for an existing arena.
Right, and then there was no development application you put in to remove it and stockpile it and?
I'm not aware that I required one.
Right, and what's the process by which this stockpile at the back of the property, which I think probably under property law, you're the owner of it, you've paid for it, it's sitting on your property. What was the process and decision-making that led to it being removed to go to Saic?
I don't know, you'd have to ask Autosport Germany. I, I was told that they would replace it and therefore that surface no longer was mine if I was getting a replacement one.
Townsend, can I just remind you, you're under oath here at a parliamentary committee and quite frankly, it's just not credible to say that something where you've been involved and paid for the material and own it and it's sitting on your property, you don't know the decision-making process by which it was removed by these eight trucks from your property and sent to Saic for a funding project supported by Equestria New South Wales where you're on the board?
I'm sorry that it's not credible to you, Mr Latham, but it's the truth.
So someone just was allowed to come into your property and remove it without your knowledge or permission?
Mr Latham, I had a big event coming up, so I needed the new surface put down. So my concern was with the new surface, not the old.
Yeah, that's not answering my question.
But you're...
I'm just trying to clarify, your evidence to this committee is that you paid for this material, it's stockpiled at the back of your property. Your property would have security gates and it's a very...
No.
You don't, anyone can just come in and remove the dirt and that's what happened?
Mr Latham, as I said, there were subcontractors that I knew.
Can I just ask you, Ms Townsend, you keep using the term subcontractors, but who was the actual principal contractor? Autosport?
No, I bought the materials from Autosport Germany.
Okay.
And when I did that, they aren't going to send in earthworks trucks from Germany and plumbers and electricians and builders, but I knew plumbers, electricians and builders.
So you organised?
So I organised that.
Okay, so when you're using the term subcontractors, you mean the people you hired to install the surface you purchased from Otto?
Yes.
And Otto wasn't responsible for finding the installers?
No.
And they, they basically only sold you the surface?
Yes.
And then?
And then oversaw it with their engineer.
And the reason why you called Otto to remove the surface after the rain event was because you bought it from them, is that correct?
I called Otto because as I understood it, it should drain better than it was.
Yeah.
And so when I, wasn't draining as well as I expected, I called their engineer who was overseeing my project and said to him, "Is this how it's supposed to drain"?
Okay, and then they told you that we, they would remove it?
They would just remove the top section, so the sand and the fibre mix and replace that.
And did they take responsibility for organising the, the people who would physically come and remove it?
Yes.
Or was that your, so at that point, it became their project management and then they chose Barry Smith, did they?
I, I don't know who they chose to remove it. I know they chose the, I know the earthworks guy that they chose to remove it, but I don't...
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how that then eventuated between them and Barry Smith. I have no knowledge of that.
So to paraphrase, you were responsible, you took responsibility for the installation phase and they took responsibility for the replacement phase?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
And could I just ask, were you aware that the failed arena surface material from your property was to be used for the indoor arena at Saic?
No.
Right, and who would let the eight trucks in to remove the, the material? How do, how do you gain entry to your property for such a project?
So the earthworks guys know the property well and they would have driven up the public track and threw the gate at the back of the property and put it on their truck.
Right, and did they ever tell you they were needing to do this and that this big stockpile of materials would soon be off your property at no cost to you?
It wasn't particularly big in comparison to the other stockpiles of stuff there and I think the earthworks guys were there doing some preparation for the event coming up. So I don't know the date that they removed it and it was...
They asked your permission to remove it?
Well, I knew they were going to you at some stage, it wasn't mine.
How did you know that?
Because when Autosport's engineer said to me that they were going to replace the surface or remove the surface and replace it, but in the, with a new one, but the old surface they'd like to stockpile at the back of the property, they were going to remove it, which I'd hoped they'd let me keep it.
Why did you want to keep it?
It would have been beneficial to use elsewhere.
Right, so they came and took it and as far as you're aware, it was your subcontractors who arranged for the trucks to remove it, not Barry Smith Motorsport?
I don't know who arranged, I don't, I wasn't part of that arrangement. It was Autosport Germany's, they said to me, "We're taking it off, we're going to stockpile it, we'll get you a new one." And after that, it was of no consequence to me as to who was taking it where and when, I didn't inquire, I'm sorry.
So in this tight knit, tight knit equestrian community where everyone knows everyone else's business, you've had no knowledge of really what's gone on with this stockpile and the fact that it was going to Saic and was an unsatisfactory outcome at, at Saic?
Sorry, I don't understand, I had no knowledge at all.
You said earlier on in evidence?
Yeah.
That it's a close-knit equestrian community where people know what's going on?
Yeah.
With other organisations and, and people meet and talk about each other's activities. But your evidence today is that you didn't really know that you're a referee for Barry Smith Motorsport, you didn't really know that Barry Smith Motorsport was involved in winning the tender?
No, I knew that, I didn't say that.
Right.
I didn't say I didn't know that Barry Smith won the tender. Did I? If I did, I'm sorry.
You said you didn't really know if you were a referee, what, what format was for being a referee for this tender?
I was a referee for the product.
For the product, okay, but not the, the tender itself?
I don't remember writing a written referee for the tender itself.
Your products don't have referees unless it's for a tender purpose of, of winning government money. So you, you don't really know what happened there and you don't really know what Dave Porter and Kevin Flynn were doing at your property on the 1st of September?
No, I assumed they were coming to, that's not what I said, Mr Latham. I said, "I assumed they were coming to have a look at the property, but forgive me, I didn't, I'd come and have a look at the project, but forgive me, I don't exactly know what they were doing there, no."
You said you didn't have a conversation with them about the quality of the project, you said hello to them and kept walking?
I think I said hello, isn't it great, look at the technology, something to, what you'd say to be polite and move on.
So you said more than hello, you said, "Look at the project, how great is the technology"?
Forgive me, Mr Latham, it was 2017, I don't know exactly what I said.
Can I just ask you, Ms Townsend, how long were you a member of the Board of Equestria New South Wales?
I, I was a member, hang on, can I, am I okay to check?
Of course, you're welcome.
Thank you. So I was a member from 2012 to 2019 and then I stepped down because you're not allowed to stay on the Board for a continuous period longer than that and then I was elected back on in 2020.
Okay, and so you were familiar as a Board Member that Equestria New South Wales was pursuing a replacement of the Saic surface?
Yes, I remember there was a Board meeting in early, can I have a look?
Yeah, of course you can. Ms Townsend, you're entitled to consult?
Thank you.
Your notes and your legal representative as well if you wish.
Thank you. In, I think it was February 2017, I mean, Saic have been in need of an upgrade for a while, it's a bit like all of us really, don't age so well, so...
Speak for yourself in that sense.
Sorry.
So, but Ms Townsend, you were aware at the time that that was, that Equestria New South Wales was pursuing the funding?
I was aware at the time that we'd put in a submission and I think from the notes of that meeting, it was at that point that I made the Board aware of the fact that I was pursuing putting in an Autosport arena and I believe that was noted and that if there were ever any issues arising from this submission process, that it would be deferred to our Farm Committee.
Sure, and you presumably were not on that committee?
No.
But to be fair here, what, I guess what I'd be interested in is, did you think that perhaps providing a reference to one of the bidders for the surface may have conflicted with your duties as a Director?
I had, no.
Why not?
Because I had let the Board know that I was an Autosport. I had no involvement in choosing the tender, I had no involvement in the tender process and to be quite honest, we were the first people to have an Autosport arena in the country.
Do you understand, look, I appreciate that you say that you weren't involved in that, but do you appreciate that perhaps if a contractor turned up to bid on a project with the support of a Board Member, that that would, from their perspective, they would have done that because they thought that that would be persuasive?
I can see that it could, if you'd like to see it in that light, yes, but equally it was replacing a Capricorn surface, so then I could see how that would go down badly with that tender. It's, I was just being honest, I had a ten Autosport arena, it was good, I wasn't involved in the tender process and I wasn't involved in, I wasn't involved any further than that.
When did you first find out that your materials that had been stockpiled at the back of the property had ended up at Saic?
I got a message on my aunt's phone from a Saic employee. I don't know the date, but it would have been late 2017.
Right, was that Darren Crumpler?
No, it was Sue Hartog.
Sue Hartog, and no time before that did you have any knowledge of where the materials were going once they left your property? Eight trucks came in and no one ever asked or told you, "We're picking this material up to go to such and such a place"?
No.
Right, and what did Sue Hartog say on the voice message?
I believe she said, "Hi Alex, it's Sue Hartog, I'd like to hear, what was it, I'd like, can you ring me back, it's about your arena surface at Saic". And then she hung, well, she thought she'd hung up and then she turned around to Dave Porter and said, "You know what, Dave? I think that Alex Townsend's dodgy". And I couldn't hear Dave's response and then the message continued with, "You know what, I'm going to do it three o'clock, Dave, I'm going to go have a kip in..." I'm going to go have a kip in cabin number three. I didn't bother to listen to any more of the message, I'm afraid.
Why would she say that you're dodgy?
Because I assume it's the same reason she thought it was okay to go and have a kip on work time. I can't answer for her.
Ms Townsend, forgive me, who is Sue Hartog?
She was an employee of Siak at the time.
All right, yeah.
And what conversations did you have with Bruce Farrar? About the fact that your materials had gone to Siak and all these plastic pieces had contaminated that facility? And it's still a problem today. When would you have first discussed that with Bruce Farrar? The equestrian?
I wouldn't, can I, sorry, just several things on that. The contaminants you talk about, I believe, are the rubber nodules that you're referring to. Okay, I have some here if you'd like to see them.
Actually, I would.
Oh, okay, in that case, I'm more than welcome, can I show you?
Yeah, you can get them, or perhaps the assistants can get them while we continue to ask questions.
I made you, sorry, it's a little bit arts and crafts. But I thought that it'd be a good way to show you. Can I get the other box out?
I think you're the first witness to ever arrive with a diorama, that I can recall.
Sorry, I realise it's really high school, sorry. And it's held together with sellotates, sorry. Can I grab that one too, Nick? Thank you. Oh, slightly falling apart, sorry. Might have to pay the cleaning bill. Okay, so is this okay?
Yes.
Are you happy?
In short, yes.
Okay. So essentially, this whole section here is what you'd call the watering system, the ebb and flow system. It's pipes that go through the arena, sorry, there's a, imagine a plastic layer at the bottom. Pipes go through, these ones, these ag pipes. And then it sits in a base of river sand, right? And then basically, the idea is that you water the arena from the bottom up. And that way, everybody has a consistent watering surface. As opposed to the old method, which was you'd water from the top. Somebody would have, you know, you'd start the day competing in a bog and the last person would be competing in a dust bowl. So this is far more efficient technology. Anyway, then you have, in Otto's sports case, this vision layer, which is the rubber mat. Okay, and that's the layer that none of the other tenders have. Which is why if you look at, I believe, their tenders, I've subsequently looked, you'll see that their tender is less expensive because they don't have the rubber mat component. But if you actually take the rubber mat component out of Otto's sports tender, I think it was, still came in cheaper or something, I don't remember, sorry. Okay, so then you have the rubber mat. And the rubber mat acts as a stabilising influence and it helps it drain. And it also is anti-concussive. And then you have the sand fibre mix on the top. When it was pulled up by the bobcats and taken up, you can only do that on an auto sport arena. And when it was taken up, if I show you a bare mat, you'll be able to see that it's got the rubber nodules here. And these rubber nodules are slightly uneven. And effectively, sorry, I'm making a mess. These are the rubber nodules here. And this is what they were talking about when they talk about it being contaminated. But if you compare them to existing surfaces, which are rubber flakes in aggregate, you can see they're really not that different and in no way harmful to a horse.
But the issue, of course, is that that's not what we contracted to buy, do you accept that?
Yes, I accept that. But what's interesting too is I was listening to the transcript. And I believe that the rubber nodules were initially, once discovered, taken out. But then in 2019, they reappeared. And my question is what happened to them in between?
Sure.
And I think it's because the Siak people grated too deep and knocked up their own rubber nodules. Because that's the only way that they would be there.
The evidence that we got was that the contamination took place while it was stockpiled on your property. So, and that is that because of the manner in which it was removed from your property is what led to the contamination. And of course, this was material that was not meant to be sourced from your property. Did you play any role in supervising its removal whatsoever?
No. I obviously let the earthworks guys on, but I wasn't involved.
Sorry, Ms Latham.
Yeah, just back to that point of when you first discussed with Bruce Farrar, that the materials were being removed from your property and ended up at Siak?
I don't recall the first time I would have discussed it. But I would imagine it would have been, what, there was a jumping competition at Siak? Or something that it had to be ready for? I probably would have been at that and seen Bruce at that.
Right, and Barry Smith, given the fact that your properties, your materials had ended up at Siak? And Barry Smith was under the pump for completing the tender properly, when did you have a discussion with him or Stephen Dingwall about the nature of the problem?
I know for a fact I didn't talk to Stephen Dingwall about the problem. And I don't even, I don't recall when I would have talked to Barry Smith. But it would have been, I would have seen Barry at the jumping competition, I would imagine. I have to confess, I don't remember those dates clearly, sorry, Mr Latham.
And at any time, given the nature of the problem that was generated at Siak, did you ring the Office of Sport and say, look, I was used as a referee for this? It's ended up as quite the disaster. And I'm sorry that my name was used and obviously the workmanship was lousy.
Ms Latham, the arena, apart from rubber contaminants, which I believe were removed, is excellent. It's a world-class surface, I've jumped on it. So I would not have rung the Office of Sport to say that. I would have said, thank you, and please, could we resurface more of the arenas? If I'd rung the Office of Sport, but I didn't.
No, I'm talking about the fact they put the wrong materials into your Wallaby Hill property. And it had to be dug up and stockpiled and replaced. Wouldn't that indicate that these people didn't know what they were doing? And you needed to tell the Office of Sport that?
No, Mr Latham, this is from my indoor arena, which is exactly the same one that is at Siak. And it is excellent. And I've had many competitions on it with many compliments about the surface. It is an excellent surface.
But you weren't unhappy that they put the wrong materials in for your arena? And they had to be dug up and stockpiled?
I had the same material in my indoor arena, that was excellent. And as for the outdoor arena, they replaced the sand and surface mix.
You weren't unhappy or distressed about that? That they put the wrong materials in and your whole arena had to be dug up? And a big stockpile appears at the back of your property? You're paying for this, wouldn't you be unhappy about the low quality of work?
It was a sand supplier that supplied a different sand unbeknownst to both Otto Sport and myself.
So can I ask then, why did Otto pay, did Otto pay for the replacement?
Yes, because their fibre would have been mixed into it. And they wanted the project to be a success.
So Otto accepted financial liability for the mistake that your sand contractor made? That's correct?
Yes, because Otto sampled the sand when it was sent to them. And I don't know why they decided, but it, I can only speculate as to why they took financial responsibility for the sand component. But by then, the sand and the fibre had been mixed. And you can't, as you can see, you can't pull them apart.
And so from your perspective, given you weren't paying for it, that you were happy for them to replace it for you?
Yes.
And can I ask, how long before the point of installation, on your property, the point of installation to the replacement, what was the time period?
It was short, it was about, it was about three weeks, I think.
Okay.
I had an event at the end of November, beginning of December. And my, sorry, Ms Latham, I know you find it incredulous that I wouldn't know. But having an event at our place is quite stressful. It's like having 200 horses descend on your home. It's quite stressful with international officials. So that was where my focus was, making sure the arena was ready for that.
Okay, and that would have encouraged you to encourage Otto to do it fast?
They knew that it had to be done by that day.
Yeah, fair enough. But equally, from the perspective of your board membership, putting aside your property, right?
Yeah.
You were aware that the Equestrian Centre was also hosting a major competition at some point in early 18, I think it was, we heard?
Yeah.
And you understood that that was creating pressure on Siak to, or Equestrian New South Wales to deliver the new surface at Siak?
Equestrian New South Wales hadn't...
Office of Sport, sorry, yes.
I wasn't across their tender process or their timelines.
Sure, but you were aware that Equestrian New South Wales was doing the tender process on behalf of the Office of Sport?
I don't believe the board of Equestrian New South Wales were doing it, no.
Okay, but you, the evidence for Mr Smith was that he was under time pressures to deliver on his contractual commitments, you're aware of that?
I am now, yes.
And I think the evidence was is that he thought he can grab the material from your arena in order to facilitate his contractual obligations to the Office of Sport? Was the evidence he gave us?
Yes.
And did he have any conversation to do at all about this?
No, because I know this, you're looking at me as if, when you paint it like that. But it wasn't like that. The auto sport engineer said, this is the wrong sand. We need to fix this, we'll take it away.
But what I'm trying to understand here is that you have responsibilities, of course, as a board member of Equestrian New South Wales. And of course, Equestrian New South Wales had an interest in making the Siak, making sure the Siak surface was available for the event, do you agree with that?
No, as I understand, the relationship was between the Office of Sport and Barry Smith. Nothing to do with Equestrian New South Wales.
In a legal sense, that's right. But do you understand, of course, as a user of the Siak surface, or the principal user of the Siak surface, that Equestrian New South Wales, of course, wanted the project built on time?
Well, everybody did, didn't they?
Yes, and of course, I imagine that Equestrian New South Wales would have felt some alarm if it wasn't being delivered on time?
I, I think we would have been disappointed, but it wasn't our responsibility.
Was the board getting updates about the progress of the Siak project?
No.
Okay, sorry, Ms Latham.
Were you aware of how extensively Mr Farrar was involved in soliciting the grant? Not declaring an interest, given the benefit for Stephen Dingwall, tipping off Barry Smith Motorsport about the likely cost of the project? And how Barry Smith Motorsport was chosen, even though they had the most expensive tender and were ranked only second on the tender evaluation score? And that they admitted they had no experience with New South Wales government work. They'd only done one surface, and that was your one which had to be dug up. Were you aware that all of this was happening with your CEO, Mr Farrar, at Equestrian New South Wales?
Sorry, was I, there are lots of facets to that question, so...
Do you know that Mr Farrar had this extensive, what I've just read out, this extensive involvement?
I don't think, as far as I know, I don't think that is accurate. I didn't know, I knew that Mr Farrar was on the advisory committee. I assumed it was because he was, had a strong engineering background. And had we had another CEO who didn't have that background, they wouldn't have been asked. As for Stephen Dingwall's relationship, I have no idea about that. As for Otto Sport having the most expensive tender, I think I explained because they're the only ones with the mats. Sorry, what was, and that's my awareness.
You must know that Stephen Dingwall's the son of the then-president, Peter Dingwall.
Yes, I know that.
You know that, so you knew that he had that relationship, which wasn't declared by Mr Farrar in his involvement with the tender. So again, you're saying that you were completely in the, you were mostly in the dark as to what was going on in the organisation and awarding of the tender?
Yes.
Right, and at what point did you have a conversation with Barry Smith to say, Barry, you had a contract there to provide the pristine sand and other materials at Siak? Why did you ever come down to my property to get this stuff that turned out to be full of grommets?
Because one, no, that wasn't my responsibility. His contract was with the Office of Sport.
Right, so you never had that conversation with Barry Smith to say, why did it turn out this way? Did you ever find out who gave Barry Smith an order or permission to go to your property to grab the contaminated material to take to Siak?
I was happy for them, it wasn't my material to, I really don't understand where you're coming at from this, sorry.
I'm just trying to drill into what appears to be your stunning ignorance of just about everything that's happened on your property, in your contract, and your role on Equestrian New South Wales. Because from what I can see as an independent observer, there's every reason to refer this to the New South Wales Police. Because the New South Wales taxpayer has been ripped off hand over fist. And you've had a central involvement in what is, in the words of Sue Hartog, a very dodgy process.
If you choose to see it that way. All I can say is, I had no involvement in where the arena surface was.
Can I just have, we have...
When did you find out where it had gone? Just when the Hartog...
When, yeah, when I got a message.
And you never rang Barry Smith to say, listen, I'm on the board of Equestrian New South Wales, you took this off my property and it's turned out to be a debacle at Siak? Why was this done?
No, I didn't have that conversation with him, because the arena surface is a good surface.
So, Ms Townsend, we'll bring this hearing to an end in about three minutes. But I was just going to ask just a couple of quick questions. Firstly, can, how long did it take to actually replace your surface?
It took, I don't remember the exact timeframe, but I think it was, the arena surface was taken up at the end of Nov, I mean, at the beginning of November. And it was put back down at 2017.
2017.
And I think it was put back down, sorry.
Sorry, and you said that you had it replaced because of the weather conditions at Robinson? Because of the excessive rain, anything else at Robinson? And that sand material had more clay in it, is that correct? That's why you removed it because of the weather?
The clay content in the sand.
Okay, so when did you find out you had problems there at Robinson in 2017?
Yeah, when?
I was just wondering, because we went through a drought. And it didn't, the drought didn't actually start breaking until 2020. I know Robinson very well, I live very close to it.
Do you?
Yes, I do. I was just wondering why you removed it when we went through a long period of drought, that's all.
It was because, there was, there was a weekend in which we had about 200 mils of rain in one weekend. And it didn't drain properly, the sand. So it was, basically, the sand had too high clay content in it, which is excellent for an indoor, but not great when you can't control the water on it.
Ms Townsend, you had said before that it was about three weeks after the original surface at Wallaby Hill was installed, that you realised that there was a problem? And you notified them about three weeks afterwards?
Yeah.
And then from that three-week point onwards, how long did it take to replace the surface?
As in, once I, like, once I notified, it was, the new one was installed by the event, which was at the beginning of December.
And how much time was that?
About three, four weeks.
Within a month, it was replaced with a notification? But what I'm understanding is, do you know where they sourced the replacement material?
I didn't ask, but I assumed that they had excess fabric.
Because we were told that part of the reason why they went for the Wallaby Hill was because there was a shortage, effectively, or it was hard for material to source. And I'm trying to understand how it is the case that Wallaby Hill managed to get replaced fast, but Siak was struggling to find the material?
I'm sorry, I didn't ask, I didn't know to ask.
Yeah, fair enough. And look, but the issue rises, I mean, the evidence that Mr Smith gave was that they were struggling to source the material, there was pressure under an event. That's why they went and grabbed the material because it was available and they thought it was of the same standard. But if your material was replaced within four weeks, there's an implication here, or at least there's a suggestion, that the material that otherwise would have arrived at Siak went to your property. Do you have any knowledge of that or do you want to respond to that?
I would assume that Mr Smith would also have been talking about the other components. You have to remember, we were only replacing the sand and the fibre mix. And the sand wasn't coming from Germany.
Well, the sand was part of the issue. And he was under contractual obligations to, I think, derive it from a source in New South Wales. And his evidence was, he did, he got it from your property. And that's what I'm trying to understand here. Because it managed, Wallaby Hill managed to get its surface replaced relatively quickly. And I accept that maybe the scope of the works were different. But you had no knowledge of where they were getting the material to replace your surface with? Is your evidence?
No, I didn't, I didn't ask, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think at that point, we might have to bring this part of the hearing to a close. Ms Townsend, thank you for your appearance today. I actually should just make the point that you weren't actually subpoenaed. And so, but therefore, we thank you for, I was recalling, I didn't sign a subpoena. So sort of, you were appearing voluntarily, I don't think you did take any questions on notice. So thank you so much for your appearance today and safe travels.
Thank you.
Welcome our next witnesses, Mr Verway from Capricorn Australia. I remind and I will ask the witness to take either an oath or an affirmation as has been supplied to you by the secretariat.
Can I start now?
You just have to take an oath or an affirmation that has been emailed to you, yes.
Can I read it out now?
Yes.
Okay. I solemnly sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to give when we show me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Can I just ask you to set your name and your position in which you've taken that oath?
My name is Laurence Verway and my position is Managing Director of Capricorn Australia.
Thank you very much. Mr Verway, would you like to make a short opening statement?
Yeah, I have that here.
Yes, please go ahead.
Sorry. Good morning Chair and Commission members. Thanks for the invitation to assist with the inquiry. I sincerely hope that this inquiry brings to public attention what has occurred at taxpayers' expense. My name is Laurence Verway and I'm the director of Capricorn Australia. I'm the director of Capricorn Australia. We both are very proud of the quality products we present and the transparency, honestly, and nature of how we conduct our own business. Since 2000, Capricorn Australia has been importing soil text, a synthetic fibre for arena services. To date, we have supplied 350 arenas with this product. Our ebb and flow system is a very well researched and recognised system that we import from Europe. Our supply is using proven components and installation techniques. We, prior to our tender to the Saic, we have successfully installed the system at five arenas. To date, we have supplied 20 ebb and flow arenas. When the media release was published in July 2021, I made a submission outlining my concerns about the handling of the tender process and the involvement of Aquestin Australia New South Wales CEO and Aquestin Australia New South Wales Board members. My submission was not based on sour grapes approach, but upon how the tender process was conducted at the time. It does not surprise me that Aquestin Australian New South Wales CEO describes me as a difficult contractor principal, or in other words, not a mate. Is this appropriate for a person in that position? How has this affected the tender selection? Prior to the tender process, I emailed the Chair of Aquestin Australia with my concerns. In the past, I have voiced my concerns over other issues with Aquestin Australia. That doesn't make you any friends or mates within Aquestin Australia and subsequently you've been seeing it being difficult. There were no questions asked after submitting our tender. That is in our experience extremely unusual. In closing, I would like to highlight a few points of concern which are also made in my submission. There was the family connection between Dingwall and Smith. Barry Smith and Bruce Farrar, almost hand in hand, collected sand from an ebb and flow arena recently installed with one of our clients. A question Australian New South Wales Board member promoting Otto on Barry Smith's website. The ability for Barry Smith to ship a large amount of equipment or material from Europe in short notice. That was it.
Thank you. Well, we'll go to questionings and we'll begin with questioning from Mr Latham.
Thank you Chair, thank you Mr Verway. Just on that last point you mentioned about shipping the materials from overseas, we heard from Barry Smith that that was his plan, but then there were problems on the docks. And then he had a Plan B, which was to source the sand from a different location. And then he went to Plan C, which was to get it from Wallaby Hill. Just on that, in your knowledge of the industry, how realistic was the original timetable to think that these materials could come from overseas at short notice?
Well, the goods that came from overseas, they were loaded three days after the tender was awarded. Yeah, so you have to collect those goods first and then consolidate them, then get them in containers and then get them to a port. So we're not talking about the sand, we're talking about the mats and all that equipment.
Well, Mr Smith said he had a particular problem in accessing the right kind of sand.
That's another problem. That is, that could be.
But the materials from overseas, these were the mats. What are you saying that they only had three days notice before they were loaded? And you're saying that's very improbable.
If it is three or four days, if even five days, that is a very short period of time. If you have to get equipment from overseas, you cannot overnight it in five days.
Right.
You need to present the container to the vessel five days prior.
So it's your evidence that the Barry Smith tender was never realistic and could never be delivered?
Perhaps Mr and Mrs Smith knew before and purchased the material.
And in the before time period, your submission makes the claim that you witnessed Mr Farrar, who's the instigator and urger and involved heavily in the process for this tender, take a sample of arena material you installed at Balli Point and give it to Barry Smith on the 1st of October 2017. What did you find so alarming about that practice?
Well, I don't think it is appropriate to collect service material from a supplier's arena for your own benefit.
And did you report this to the Office of Sport to say that Mr Farrar appears to be... No, you didn't? Why didn't you?
Obviously, I have reported it to the Chair of Aquestin Australia at that time.
Right. And when did you find out that Mr Farrar had also spoken to Mr Smith about the likely cost parameters of the project and the amount of money that might need to be quoted in the tender to be successful?
I have not found that out at all.
Right. It's reported by the Office of Sport in their material, but you were unaware of that. Your knowledge of any assistance Mr Farrar was giving to Mr Smith related to the Willinga Park Arena at Balli Point.
I know nothing about it.
No, no, no. You just said that you... I'm referring to what happened on the 1st of October. So sorry if...
They took the sample.
Yep. And you attended a meeting at the invitation of Jim Cassiff, the project manager, and you were informed that Saic project had to be finished in a certain timeframe for the 2018 event. Was the Office of Sport moving its goalposts at that point? Were you originally told of a longer timeframe for delivery of the project and then they shortened it up?
No, that project was always the case because it was for the CDI to be held. I'm not sure about that.
Okay. And...
But it was, yeah.
And then when you found out about the undeclared conflict of interest where Mr Farrar didn't declare that Stephen Dingwall, the son of his president, would be a financial beneficiary. Why didn't you write directly to the Office of Sport to let them know about it rather than writing to Equestria in New South Wales?
Well, my contacts were always been with Aquestin New South Wales and I never thought to go to another channel.
How do you think the officials at the Office of Sport did find out about that undeclared conflict of interest and then raised it subsequently?
How they found out?
Yeah, do you know?
You mean? No.
No. And I don't know if you heard the earlier evidence of Alex Townsend, but as a professional in this industry, how unusual would it be, unprecedented indeed, to lodge a tender to say you're getting materials from overseas and sand from a certain location and then go to secondhand materials stockpiled on a property at Wallaby Hill to transport them up to Saic?
Well, transporting and installing secondhand material would not be good in any case.
And what action have you taken about the fact that you missed out, having been the preferred tenderer in the tender evaluation process, that you missed out and the contract went elsewhere in these extraordinary circumstances? Have you taken any legal advice about the impropriety of it and sought any compensation for your lost time and effort?
No, 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 no.
We see you the preferred tenderer. We see you the preferred tenderer.
That's right, isn't it, Mr Verver? You were the preferred tenderer as assessed by the tender evaluation process?
That's what I understand. That's what I understand.
Yeah, no, that's what the Office of Sport documents indicate. And did you have any contact? What sort of contact did you have with the technical advisory committee that Mr Farrar headed and organised in terms of their work and their assessment of your technical proficiency?
None.
None? They made no contact with you whatsoever?
No, no. The only meeting, the only meeting we had was the tender meeting with Mr... And that meeting was announced three or four days prior to the date that meeting was. That is the only contact I had.
Sorry, who is it? The Mr. Who? Sorry, there was a bit of a technical difficulty.
Yeah, there was a name. I don't know the name. Hang on. It was the person that was handling the tender.
Okay. You can take it on notice if you can, just to find a name.
Yeah, but Mr Verver, what you're saying is that for the first time ever, the Office of Sport had a technical advisory committee headed by Mr Farrar, who was the instigator and urger of the grant process. And they made no contact with you? They never had a single conversation or didn't organise any inspections of...
The only conversation we had was at the day, at the meeting, when we all, all contractors were together. We were four or five suppliers. We were all together there. That was, that's the only contact I had with this.
Right. And how surprised were you to find out that the technical advisory committee had moved against the recommendation of the tender evaluation process and effectively knocked you out in favour of Barry Smith Motorsport with Karen Jones from Office of Sport now telling us that that was part of the process?
Well, I was very surprised that that was happening, but also the tender was asking for the product. But only Office of Sport would supply. We could not supply that product. What was specified in the tender.
Can I ask, sorry, can I ask, just in respect to these particular arenas, at least, without wanting necessarily to probe you on the commercial aspects of your business, but are these high margin products or low margin products?
So I can't hear you or hardly hear you.
Sorry, are these projects high margin products or are they low margin products?
If you look at margin in percentage, they're very low margin.
Okay. And as a result, is it the case that if Mr Smith was using the Wallaby Hill material that he would have saved money on otherwise procuring the material?
Well, yes, because if he wouldn't have been able to reuse it, he has to dispose of it.
And so as a result, the decision that seemingly he was party to use the Wallaby Hill material would have led to a direct financial benefit to him in that he would have avoided having to pay for its disposal and presumably avoided having to buy the material that he was warranted to pay. Is that fair?
That's what I would say, yes.
And is that a way in which a person who successfully gains a contract can improve a margin if their costs obviously are lowered?
No, I don't understand your question.
I'm saying is that the way in which effectively, if the Office of Sport's contract was a lot for, effectively resulted in the winning contractor earning a low margin, one way in which they could potentially improve their margin was to substitute the materials?
I would not.
Okay.
Can I just say, Mr Verway, just coming back to the tender specifications where again, Mr Farrar had a heavy involvement. If they were designed for this ebb and flow system that only Otto and Barry Smith Motorsport as their agents could supply, why did you tender and what sort of product would you have delivered in the context where the tender evaluation had you as the preferred tenderer?
We have, we have, we have a product for an ebb and flow system.
Yeah.
With our ebb and flow system. Yes. And in hindsight, in hindsight, we wasted our time in tendering because the mats were the preferred supply, the preferred item, I suppose.
So you could have supplied the same material that Barry Smith was supposed to supply at Saic. Is that, is that right?
We have an ebb and flow system, but it's different from what is there now. Yeah, but it is, it is an ebb and flow system, but it works on a different principle.
Right. And your feeling is that you could have supplied the product, but in the end, the technical advisory committee knocked you out on what you see as unfair grounds? Is that right?
Well, yes, I don't think it is fair.
Well, certainly it doesn't seem fair. They had no contact with you to find out how technically proficient you would have been. So it does seem quite an extraordinary process. Is there anything else about the process that you found unusual?
Well, I found unusual the fact that we had submitted our tender and never been asked any questions, which is quite unusual. If we sent a tender into somebody, a quotation to somebody, we always have asked questions. But we haven't been asked questions. We've only been asked that you were not successful, told that you were not successful.
Right. So you've said the technical advisory committee had no contact. Are you saying the tender evaluation committee had no contact with you as well?
No.
And no one from the Office of Sport had contact with you to assess the quality of what you were submitting?
No.
Can I ask?
How does that work?
Did you make inquiries or did you seek to follow up your bid?
No.
Okay.
In that case, if you submit a tender, you just have to wait until somebody comes up.
Yeah, fair. And tell me, Mr Verway, you said that you had installed, what, five arenas, did you say in your opening?
Yeah, yeah, at the time, yeah.
And is this a substantial part of your business, arena installations of these surfaces?
Arena supply is a substantial part of our business. Yeah, that's correct.
And you trade in New South Wales? And do you trade elsewhere in Australia or supply...?
We trade all over Australia.
Do you do international work or...?
Sorry?
Do you trade internationally?
Well, we trade internationally, but not with arenas.
Okay. And in respect to the, I'm trying to understand how broad this market is. But have you previously encountered or competed with Barry Smith Motorsports for the installation of arenas?
Well, Barry Smith Motorsport, the first arena he has installed was the indoor arena at Wallaby Hills. And the second one was the outdoor arena at Wallaby Hills.
So in respect to your experience, is it reasonable to say that you had installed five prior to the Saic bid? And to the best of our knowledge, Mr Hill, Mr Smith had only installed one?
Correct. Or, yeah, perhaps prior to the Saic project, he has done, yeah, he has done one. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And there were issues to do with that first installation, namely the installation of the wrong material that resulted in a request by the owner of Wallaby Hill to replace that surface. Is that your knowledge?
Yes, that's my knowledge.
So when you bid, did you emphasise... So when you bid, I, did you emphasise your experience in arena installation?
Yes, yes.
Did you think that that was one of the?
Say, sorry?
Did you think that that was one of the more significant, uh, reasons or one of your more significant strengths of your bid?
I don't know.
Well, um, I'm trying to understand, you nominated or you cited your experience with the arena installation as a reason why you could be trusted to deliver the surface at Saic on time and on budget, I presume?
Yes.
Yeah, fair enough. And were you surprised to learn that you had lost out to a person who was relatively new to the industry?
Yes.
Yes. Is Mr. Mallard or Mr. Latham further questions?
No, I have one.
Okay. Um, and can I just say, since the, the completion of this particular contract, are you continuing to install arenas?
Yes, we have, uh, what, what has happened? We have, we had installed five arenas prior to the Saic project and we now have done over twenty.
Okay. And, uh, in the installation of the further fifteen, have you competed with Mr. Smith since?
Uh, the, 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 yes, perhaps. We do always know that.
Okay, sure. Um, but to the best of your knowledge, Mr. Smith is still active in this market?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, I guess my final question is, is that in respect to the, uh, actual tender process, we now identified Capricorn as being a tenderer. We identified Mr. Smith as being a tenderer. Are you aware of anybody else who tended?
Uh, there was a company called Australian, uh, Equestria Services.
And can I ask, how were you approached to tender? Were you, did you respond to a public and open call for tenders or were you approached or invited to tender?
No. From, from memory, we were sort of made aware that the tender was coming up.
So when you say you were made aware, were you made aware by the Office of Sport?
By Equestria New South Wales.
Okay. And did Equestria New South Wales ask you to submit a bid?
Oh, the, the, how did it go? They, they invited us for me. They invited me for that meeting, uh, that tender meeting. And I went to, I went to there.
Okay. So it, just to be clear, your recollection is that Equestria New South Wales invited you to that meeting?
Yes.
Were you aware at the time that Equestria New South Wales itself wasn't conducting the tender?
No, I was not.
Okay. So you arrived on the expectation that actually the decider, or at least the, the person or the organisation letting the tender was Equestria New South Wales?
Yes, yeah.
And so is it fair to say that Equestria, and, and then thereafter you found out it was with the Office of Sport actually?
Well, I found out much later.
Okay. So, uh, to the best of your knowledge, Equestria New South Wales were passing themselves off as an agent of the Office of Sport?
Well, they, they, they were the, the, the talking body, I suppose. And, uh, and, and that's what, what the contact was. But the contact about this particular project was only on the day of the, the tender meeting.
So just to be clear, other than, than the notification, uh, however, in whatever form by Equestria New South Wales, you otherwise wouldn't have known that this was a job that was available?
No.
Okay. Um, fair enough. And so can we infer in from that that Equestria New South, in the eyes of the market and the bidders, um, you all thought that Equestria New South Wales was playing a key role in the tender?
That's correct.
And did you think that they had decision-making power in that tender?
That's what I thought, yes.
Yeah. And did you ever change your view and realise that it was the Office of Sport that was actually making the decision here?
Um, no.
Okay. And so to the extent to which you were alarmed about potential conflicts of interest by members of Equestria New South Wales, part of that alarm was because you thought Equestria New South Wales were the actual organisation letting the tender?
Yes, I was, I was surprised that, uh, that, that Mr. Farah was collecting sand from, from an arena, uh, because after they were making that decision, yes, that's, that's correct.
So in your mind, I guess the obvious question is here, do you think that the decision was already made to grant the contract to Equestria New South Wa-, oh, to Barry Smith Motorsports, uh, from the moment, or from the very beginning?
Well, that is, uh, that's a hard one. The specification was written about that product, that auto product.
So effectively you think that this, the project was deliberately specced so only Mr. Smith could win the tender?
Deliberately, I would not use that word, but the spec was written around that product.
Okay. Okay. I think, um, I'm certainly done in terms of that. Um, thank you, Mr. Verve for joining us from overseas at a time that has probably kept you up. Um, and?
Yeah, just wanted to.
Uh, well, well, I guess we, uh, wish you the very best and enjoy your, the rest of your evening. Um, and, uh, thank you for appearing, uh, for us. You took, you've taken one question on notice. Uh, the secretary will be in touch with you in tw-, uh, to provide you with that question that you've taken on notice and you'll have 21 days, uh, to return an answer. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have two minutes before our next witness is due, but are they here?
Yeah, we've got one in, one in person and we can admit one.
Great. I might just ask the next witness who's appearing in person to come forward. And we will also admit the next, uh, the person who is joining us from online as well. Uh, Ms. Seifred, thank you for joining us. Um, firstly, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. And secondly, do you mind? Uh, thank you. Uh, do you mind just, uh, confirming that you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. And we can hear you too. That's excellent. Uh, have a seat and I'll invite you shortly, Mr. Valance. Uh, we just might, yes, I think we can commence, um, the opening statements. Um, I'll, I welcome our next witness, a panel of witnesses who are two individuals who provided technical advice regarding this tender. I might ask first, Mr. Valance, to, to state your name and or position and take either an oath or affirmation as has been supplied to you.
Thank you. I, Ian John Valance, do solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evet-, evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Uh, and Mr. Valance, do you wish to reference your position?
Um, I was, uh, contracted by the Office of Sport, uh, to, uh, sign off on the arena as being fit for purpose after, uh, the work had been done on the arena.
Thank you. And Ms. Seifred, can I also ask you to state your name and your position and take either an oath or affirmation as has been supplied to you by the secretary?
Um, my name is Mary Seifred. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Um, just to say, um, I could outline my credentials, but I was invited by, um, Saic to also sign off on the, uh, arena as fit for purpose and say.
Thank you very much. Um, I might invite, uh, each of the witnesses if they wish to, to make a, uh, short opening statement, if they wish. And I might ask Mr. Valance as he's in person to go first. Um, and Mr. Valance, can you just bring the microphone closer to your, um, thank you. A little bit more forward. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So good morning, uh, honourable members of the committee. Uh, my introductory comments will be brief. Uh, I've been involved with the Sydney International Equestrian Centre, uh, since its early development in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, for the Sydney Olympic Games. Since that time, I've witnessed the centre grow and mature into true and lasting international equestrian centre. The equestrian community are really fortunate or extremely fortunate that successive state governments have continued to provide funding and support the maintenance and development of the venue. And this in fact is in contrast to the majority of other Olympic venues, which after the Olympic, uh, experience, those venues disappear. Ours still exists in a really strong manner. The one aspect of the venue that has not kept pace with new technology available is the upgrading of the arena surfaces. At Saic or the Sydney International Equestrian Centre, there are fifteen arenas. Of these, there are only four that meet the basic requ-, four that meet the requirements for high-level safe competition. Two of these are grass arenas and the other two are the recently installed arenas that we're currently discussing. The two arenas refurbished with the auto surface have demonstrated how good an arena surface can be. These arenas allow for premium performance by athletes at all levels of ability, the efficient conduct of events in a sa-, safe and supportive environment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I might ask Ms. Seifred if you'd like to make a short opening statement as well.
Um, I'd like to, um, support what John has said. Since the Sydney Olympics, and I actually was a dressage judge at the Sydney Olympics, the, um, the science of producing top footing for safety for horses and athletes has improved outside and, um, is now a very, um, technical matter. And unfortunately, the arena surfaces at Saic at the moment mostly are not up to standard for top performance. However, the investment in the indoor surface and the warm-up, I think, is a step in the right direction and certainly those surfaces are up to standard. I was recently the technical delegate at the Tokyo Olympics, um, which is a, and, um, as a technical delegate is my job to, um, declare that the field of play is fit for purpose and ready for competition. Certainly, I'm not one of the footing scientists, but I was closely working with two other people hired at the Tokyo Olympics to prepare the surface and, um, uh, I guess they gave me a lot of advice in terms of, um, what is needed for a top surface. Certainly, it would be wonderful if Saic, which is a fantastic equestrian centre, it's, it's got so many aspects to it which, um, allow it to run all three Olympic disciplines at a high level. But in a sense, for jumping and dressage, the services do need improvement generally to run a big championship show there, which is necessary for the development of all equestrian sports in Australia.
Thank you, Ms. Seifred. Um, we will now go to questioning from members. And as is custom, Mr. Latham can commence.
Thank you, Chair, and, um, thank you to the witnesses. Uh, Mr. Valance, um, can I take you to, uh, your work on the technical advisory committee? How, how did you come to be on that committee?
Um, I'm actually not one hundred percent sure, um, Mr. Latham, but I imagine it was, uh, through the, the Office of Sport. Uh, they were the main people I had contact with.
Right. But in imagining what happened, who was the first person to say to you, um, John, can we get you on this committee?
I imagine it was, it may have been Bruce Farah. Uh, that's perhaps the only other per-, person other than some, one of the off, members of the Office of Sport.
Right. And at that stage, did Mr. Farah discuss with you the likely tenderers for this project and who he thought was preferred?
No.
No. And in your, um, uh, submission to Mr. Qasif on the thirty-first of October twenty seventeen, you provide a outline of, um, a summary, if you like, of the quality and different problems with the three, uh, tenderers, uh, in the final race, Equestrian Services, Barry Smith Motorsport and Capricorn Australia. And under Barry Smith Motorsport, your first point is that they've got limited local testimonies. Uh, who did you regard as the referee for Barry Smith Motorsport?
I don't clearly understand your question. Do you?
Well, you've, you've got a summary of what you think of the Barry Smith Motorsport.
Yes.
Uh, tender. And this has been submitted to Mr. Qasif on the thirty-first of October twenty seventeen. And the, and the first, uh, three words say limited local testimonies, but with significant work at one venue, Wallaby Hill. So when you said they had local testimonies, who were you referring to?
It would have been Wallaby Hill. Um.
And, and what we, I don't know if you saw the evidence by Alex Townsend earlier in the day, but we were having trouble understanding what was the nature of that reference or testimony from Wallaby Hill. Um, she seemed to be suggesting it was a Facebook video about the product. Was it your understanding that Alex Townsend was only endorsing the product, not the quality of work by Barry Smith Motorsport?
I would imagine, uh, that it was the product. It, uh, in my, uh, discussions and I think, uh, in my, uh, uh, submission to, to the committee, uh, I said that I had experience, uh, and discussions with, uh, other colleagues in Europe, uh, where, uh, this is a very common, uh, or the, the auto, uh, product is quite common, uh, and quite widely, widely used. And their endorsement, uh, was, there's probably nothing better, but I agree. Uh, I had only the experience, uh, of, um, Alex Townsend's, uh.
But you discussed it with her, did you? Or there was a written reference she submitted or just the Facebook video? What was the nature of your contact, uh, contact with Alex?
There, there wasn't any discussion at all. I, I, um, had, um, look, I'd, I'd done, uh, design jumping courses at her venue, uh, uh, over, uh, four or five years, uh, at various times. And, uh, I can recall the first time I designed at her indoor arena where she had a surface put down and at the, it was hopeless. Well, it didn't work. It didn't work as, as it, as it should have done. Uh, then I, um, that was subsequently replaced and I went and had a look at what, uh, the auto surface had done, uh, to it and wa-, uh, formed a very positive, uh, impression of that.
Sorry, when you said you went and had a look?
Yes.
You physically visited?
Yes, yes.
And you did that as part of your, your duties as a member of the tender evaluation panel?
No, it was, uh, prior, uh, a, a little bit prior to becoming involved in the tender process, uh.
So you just went out of interest, did you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And you have?
You never looked at the, this outdoor arena at Wallaby Hill that was subsequently dug up?
No.
No.
I, I went to the indoor only, uh, because primarily that's, uh, uh, what I was interested in a, as to how, uh, the arena, the indoor arena had improved from one surface to the next.
So at no stage did you speak to Alex Townsend and say, Alex, um, Barry Smith Motorsport, they've only done one surface, uh, in the country. That's Wallaby Hill Outdoor Arena. How's it going?
I, no, I had no conversation with Alex Townsend.
You never saw any Facebook video from her?
No.
So how did you access?
You never saw any written document from her?
No.
Well, how did you know there was a local testimony for Barry Smith Motorsport if she was the referee and you had zero contact with her?
Um, from what I'd seen at the, uh, indoor arena, uh, I was, uh, suitably impressed.
Sorry, Mr. Valance, I'm a bit confused, but, um, you went and had a visit to Miss Townsend's property to inspect the surface? That's correct? I heard you?
Yes, yes, I did.
And was that at an event that was being held at the property or?
No, I happened to be in the area. I have, uh, friends at Fitzroy Falls and, um, so I drove down there and had a look.
So it was a private visit?
Uh, yeah.
Just by yourself?
Yes.
Was anybody else there with you?
No. No.
So how did you get on the property?
I pushed the button on the gate and it opens and?
You basically, did you call Ms Townsend and say, I'm coming?
No, it's, uh, I didn't, yeah, go on.
Look, again, you're leaving a bit of an impression that you trespassed, like you just turned up and went to have a look at the property.
Everyone else does, why not?
And is it, and you never actually contacted Ms Townsend to say, hey, I'm on your property and I'm here?
Oh, sorry, yes, I did. Um, I didn't, I didn't pre-book.
Sure, okay, you didn't pre-book. Okay, you didn't get notice of your visit?
No, no, I know Alex well enough not to need to do this.
Okay, fair enough. Look, without necessarily understanding all the relationships, but therefore you would have had some discussion with Ms Townsend about the quality of the property?
Ah, about the footing, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Not, at that stage, I only looked at the indoor arena.
And this was after the arena was replaced, Ms Townsend's was replaced. So you were seeing the product that you?
Yes, she, she originally had a, an arena.
Product, you said?
A, a product there from another company and it was?
The same company, actually. Ms Townsend said that the original track was installed by Otto, that there was an issue with the sand and after a rain event, she contacts Otto and they decide to replace it. And then I'm, you're saying to us that you were aware that she had a hopeless surface, I think was the term you used.
I, sorry?
You used the term that she had a hopeless surface and then you repla, she replaced it and you went and saw the new?
That's, that's right, yes.
Great, but they were both from the same company. The hopeless one and the good one were both from Otto?
Um, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
That, you know, for me, there was a difference in the fibre texture and stuff like that with it, but that, that was the, the first surface that her indoor was the first auto surface I had been on.
That you were aware of was, was an auto surface?
Well, yeah, I, I, as I said before, I didn't believe that the auto surface, the one I saw most recent was auto.
And this inspection all took place before you were on the tender evaluation panel?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And, and was it before Mr Farah approached you to serve on that panel?
Look, I, I can't recall that answer confidently one way or the other.
Sure, thank you.
Right, so just to clarify, you never got to personally inspect the outdoor auto surface at Wallaby Hill that was finished at the end of August twenty seventeen and ripped up in November?
That's right, yes.
You never got to see it in the two months it existed, there was a member in October. So did you know by the thirty-first of October twenty seventeen that there'd been the rain event at Robertson, the drainage was hopeless, too much clay and it was going to be ripped up?
No.
No. Did it occur to you that if you'd rung Alex Townsend on the thirtieth of October before submitting your technical assessment to Mr Casif and said, Alex, how's that surface going? She would have said to you, well, it's no good actually, it doesn't drain and we're going to have to rip it up and replace it?
No, I didn't, didn't feel that need. There'd been?
Right, but you're submitting a, a technical assessment for a substantial New South Wales government grant and you had no up-to-date knowledge of how this one arena by Barry Smith Motorsport was performing at, at Wallaby Hill? You had no understanding?
That's correct.
None whatsoever?
Yeah.
Okay, but you're still recommended for them?
Yeah, from my, as I mentioned earlier, I had spoken with colleagues in Europe about the format or the process that is used. There are other companies other than Otto, but Otto has more, more experience. They're probably the most prolific provider of those surfaces. The other thing with Otto, they said that they use mats in their surface, which actually separates the competition surface from the drainage surface and also maintains the moisture in the, in the top layer, which is critical for?
Just to be clear here, Mr Valance, Otto didn't submit a bid, Barry Smith did, that was your understanding?
Oh, sorry, yes.
And Barry's bid was using the Otto product, that's correct?
Okay, yeah, sorry.
That's your understanding?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes.
That was your understanding?
That Barry Smith was submitting the tender?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, did you have a conversation with Barry Smith to say, how's that surface going at Wallaby Hill?
No.
No, did you have a conversation with Stephen Dingwall?
No.
Barry Smith Motorsport or his father Peter?
No.
No, Bruce Farah? On your committee, did anyone else, Ms Farrell or Bruce Farah have a firsthand understanding of how the Barry Smith Auto Surface at Wallaby Hill was performing in September, October twenty seventeen?
I'm, I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Attention. So no, nobody knew how it was going down there, but they still ended up the preferred T A C recommendation?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, you had no worries about the schedule for getting these mats from overseas, which was very tight?
It was understood that it was, was tight, but it was manageable and I can't recall it being a major issue at that, at that time.
Okay, and, and your assessment of Capricorn Australia, which had been the tender evaluation committee preferred tenderer and they had a cheaper quotation than Barry Smith, the, the first two lines here read, the first company to install Ebb and Flow in Australia and positive response to low, to recent installations. What, what were those positive responses?
At that stage, I understood that he, he had installed an Ebb and Flow system without mats and without technology involved in censoring, having sensors in the soil at Wollinga Park. And I'd had occasion to work on that arena.
Is that the only one?
Of his arenas?
Capricorn, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is the only Capricorn arena that, of the Ebb and Flow style.
That you?
Like other arenas, prior to the introduction of the Ebb and Flow, I'd seen several.
Right, well, so you knew that Wollinga, Wollinga Park was working well for Capricorn, but had no knowledge of how the Barry Smith Auto one was going at Wallaby Hill. Barry Smith was costing more. On what basis did your committee recommend for Barry Smith?
I think the, the reason Barry Smith's tender came up higher was because of the installation of the mats.
Okay, as in you thought that the significant advantage of his particular bid was his use or the use of mats, mats in the Otto product?
It's one of the significant things, yes. And I didn't have such great experience with the Capricorn surface when I designed a jumping course at Wollinga Park.
So when you say you didn't have much experience, I mean, you didn't have a positive experience?
Didn't, yeah, sorry, didn't have a positive experience.
Right.
And we weren't allowed to put any vehicles on the arena. It was too green, as Mr Verway said, and it had been down for two or three months, as I understand at that stage. At that time, and the reason we were actually using the Capricorn Ebb and Flow arena was because of a significant rain event and we were originally to jump on the grass arena, but it was too wet to safely do that. So we transferred all the, the jumping onto this one warm-up, a warm-up arena that Capricorn had installed and when it, it rained and rained and rained. And so the water was not getting away as it should. And Mr Verway had to physically go and adjust the ballcock that determined the level of the water. You know, it, it just looked a little bit agricultural to me. And my thoughts were, what happens if it had rained overnight? There's no one there to adjust the ballcock to do it. So there was that. And, you know, where other arenas, not just Ebb and Flow, but other arenas have been installed and within two or three days, they're effectively ready to be competed on. And that's, that's, that's part of the reasoning for my decisions.
Right, in, in your summary, you say that Barry Smith Motorsport appear to have a schedule in place that will allow them to comply with the tight frame for the installation of a new service to get ready for this scheduled event in early twenty eighteen. Was there any evidence that Barry Smith could meet his timetable for importing these mats and accessing the sand other than just an assurance from him? Did anyone say, where's your evidence that you can get these things off the dock overseas and into Australia?
Not that I'm aware of.
No?
So just to be clear, did the committee accept that at face value? Is that your evidence or? Did the technical, the committees for which you were a member of accept that representation from Mr Smith at face value?
I would say yes.
Okay, and you didn't take any other steps to interrogate whether that was feasible?
No.
And it was your understanding that he was sourcing that material from overseas?
Yes, that was told to us that the mats were coming.
From overseas?
Yes.
And no one mentioned to you that they were in fact actually likely to come from Wallaby Hill?
No.
Okay, and would it have changed your decision if, if you knew that?
I don't know that the mats were actually ever going to come.
Or the sand?
Of the sand. Yeah, it, for me, it was not discussed that, you know, with the material that hadn't worked at Wallaby Hill was going to be used in the indoor arena, that, that wasn't discussed.
But presumably, that, I appreciate it wasn't discussed, but if, if the committee was told that, how would the committee have responded?
I suppose it, it's hard to say.
The material that's been dug up, moved, mixed with other materials, including what turned out to be contaminants. I presume therefore that there was at least some acknowledgement that digging up material, moving it, reinstalling it is perhaps inferior to having brand-new material being put in.
But that was up to the members or representatives of the Office of Sport.
No, I'm asking you from a technical sense. Are you suggesting that it doesn't matter that the material was dug up, mixed with what turned out to be the grommets and then reinstalled? That, that has no technical bearing whatsoever?
Oh, it would be, for me, it would have been preferable to, to have the material as was outlined in the tender document and that, but that was outside, I saw it outside my remit. That was for an ultimate decision to be made by the Office of Sport.
But you basically gave your technical recommendation on the material that was put in front of you, which included that the sand would be new sand?
No, I don't think I, I don't recall that being discussed.
Okay. Because we've basically, Mr Valance, the taxpayers didn't get what we paid for. That's the core of this.
Yes.
We got material that we didn't pay for. And I'm asking you, if you knew that, would that have had any bearing on your decisions?
I was not consulted on the material that came from Wallaby Hill.
Sure.
I had one meeting where I was introduced to the Office of Sport. At that stage, I'd been asked to provide expert knowledge, I suppose. I don't think I'd been asked to sign off on the material or the installation of the surface at that stage.
But did you, you, you said in your opening statement that you certified it as being fit for purpose? That's correct? Did I hear correctly?
Ultimately, I did, yes.
And so you were both in the evaluation panel on the tender and then when that, when the actual material was installed, you returned to certify it as being correct?
That's, yeah, as fit for purpose, safe and fit for purpose.
Did you know at that time about these grommets that were in the surface?
At what time is that?
When you signed it off in, in January twenty eighteen?
I was, I was aware that there were some grommets in there and I, I believe in my initial submission, I said that there was some but there wasn't a proliferation of them.
Why did you sign it off if there's these pieces of plastic in there that weren't supposed to be there and it was using second-hand materials from Wallaby Hill? In, in non-compliance with the tender spec?
The Office of Sport had allowed the non-compliant.
Right, they said to you that this is okay, the non-compliance?
No, it was never discussed, it was never discussed with me. My purpose was to say, is it, is it a safe and fit-for-purpose arena? And it certainly was.
Valance, why did you then just say that the Office of Sport agreed to say that it was okay to be contaminated?
Sorry?
You just said that it was your understanding that the Office of Sport had allowed it to be contaminated. Why did you say that? Because they told us that they didn't know it was contaminated until well afterwards. Because at the time you certified it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms Seafried may have certified it as well. The Office of Sport was unaware that the proliferation of grommets was as wide as it was. Their evidences is that they only found out about the scope and scale of the contamination months afterwards. And in fact, it only came to their attention, I think it was seven months, eight months after the site was installed. So what I'm trying to understand is it's not the case that the Office of Sport permitted it, they didn't know about it according to them. Are you suggesting that they, they did actually know about it?
Yes.
Okay, why do you say that they should, they knew about it?
I believe in the one meeting I attended that, I can give you an example of, and I don't know who the officer was who made this comment about the, the material. The material was at the site at that time and I don't know whether they had been down to inspect it, but they were aware of, I'm sure, of the grommets in it.
Was that Mr Crumpler? Mr Crumpler, Darren Crumpler?
Mr Latham, I, I really don't know. But the person from the Office of Sport, and they were obviously quite high up, said, we have to be careful with this because imagine if Alan Jones got hold of it and we had put second, you know, reject material in, into this government contract.
And so, sorry, someone said that, someone said to you?
No, no, it made this, no, not specifically to me.
To who?
To the, to the meeting.
Sorry, a meeting of whom?
There was Barry Smith and that was there. And that was the first time I had met Barry Smith. There were one or two representatives from SaAC and then other representatives from the Office of Sport.
And your recollection is that a representative, a senior representative from the Office of Sport told that meeting, imagine if Alan Jones gets hold of this?
Yes.
And we were using second-hand material?
Yes.
And you have no recall of who was there?
No.
The actual name of the individual?
No.
Well, on notice, can you see if you can check your records?
Where was it?
Sorry?
On notice, can you check your records to see if you can recall?
I'd have to see if SaAC had the minutes of that meeting.
Was Ms Seafried at that, Seafried at the meeting?
No.
Okay, and can I ask, after you heard this, what did you do?
Nothing.
Why not?
For me, it was outside my remit on it.
What, that, sorry, a senior official tells you that?
No, I didn't.
Told a meeting?
Yeah, made the comment to the meeting, yeah.
But you were the, was your responsibility to provide technical certification?
I wasn't consulted on that.
Sorry, but you said that your job was to certify it as being fit for purpose, correct?
At the completion of the project, yes.
Okay, and so this meeting took place prior to the completion of the project?
Oh, well before.
Okay, and where was the meeting?
At the Sydney International Equestrian Centre.
It was on the site?
Yes.
So who, who said this about Alan Jones? Was it Jim Casif, the project?
No, it wasn't Jim.
That Matt Miller, the CEO of Office of Sport?
I really do not know who it was. But it was, certainly wasn't Jim Casiff, because that was the first time I met him at the meeting. And I don't believe it was Matt Miller. I would, I couldn't guess.
Do you think there would have been minutes taken of this meeting? Was there someone there, you know?
I would imagine, I would imagine there may, there would be minutes.
So was the equestrian New South Wales at this meeting?
I don't, don't believe so.
So why were you at the meeting? What was the purpose of the meeting?
To, was to be introduced to the Office of Sport people as they were in there.
First time you met the Office of Sport?
Yes.
So at your very first meeting of the Office of Sport, a senior representative from the Office of Sport says to a meeting, imagine if Alan Jones gets held of this and finds out that we're using, what you said, secondhand material?
Yes.
And that didn't surprise you?
In what way do you mean be surprised that someone would say that?
Yes.
For sure, I was surprised, but it wasn't my place, I didn't feel it was my place to react to that.
Right, but nobody said the tender's in non-compliance. Maybe we should ask Barry Smith to start again.
No, that was outside my remit.
Right, but no one at the Office of Sport, their main concern was that Alan Jones wouldn't find out, not only about the secondhand material, the non-compliance of the tender, and the failure of the Office of Sport or anyone else to say to Barry Smith, quite simply, you've provided a secondhand material with all these plastic pieces in it, you need to comply with the tender for which you're being paid. No one raised that possibility, that he needed to start again.
Not that I recall.
And then, so at that point, you're aware that there's secondhand material?
Oh, yes.
Is that the first time you became aware that there was secondhand material?
No, I had seen the pile of material as it was dumped at the Sydney International Equestrian Centre.
Uh, sorry, so you saw the pile, okay, so when you first see the pile that's been transported to the SaAC from Wallaby Hills, when you first realised it was contaminated?
Yes.
And you didn't then tell the Office of Sport that, or you thought they already knew at that time?
Blind Freddy could, could have seen that there were grommets.
And then you concluded that it was safe to be installed?
No, I didn't have to do the safety.
But you said that your job was to certify as fit for purpose, safety and?
At the completion of the project.
Okay, and so at the completion of the project, you thought it was fit for purpose?
Absolutely.
Right.
And then that turned out to be incorrect though, didn't it? Because we had to dig it up again and remove all the grommets.
When the athletes tested it, there were maybe one or two or three grommets. The show jump riders who tested the arena had no, no issue. They thought it was absolutely fantastic. It was.
But the evidence we got was that this was a problem that was likely to be exposed with use. Not, and that therefore, obviously the people who first used it wouldn't have noticed it. And that as the arena was used is when the problem, the school manager to the problem was certified. That's what we've been told. And as a result of that, the Office of Sport has now had to spend $300,000 plus to fix it, which is about 10% of the original cost. So what I'm trying to understand, Mr. Valance, is when you signed it off as being fit for purpose, was that a correct judgment?
Yes.
And you say that because why?
I watched the three show jump riders and show jumping has more impact on a surface than dressage or showing. They are low impact events. If a horse is jumping an obstacle which is 1.6 metres high and 1.5 metres wide, they need a good surface that doesn't move away from them on takeoff and doesn't slide away from them on landing. These riders, excuse me, these riders started out at around a metre twenty, 1.2 metres, and just gradually worked up to about 1.45. And then in the end, one of the riders, I think it was Billy Raymont, said, John, put it up to 1.60 and he wanted just to feel what it was. They came out of there and said, this is unbelievable.
But that's, that's, that's interesting and useful. But why then did we have to pay $300,000 to repair the site, I think less than a year of its installation?
As you said, if through constant working of the arena, the grommets would have come up, then that was a different issue. But who was to know then that within the material, there were all these grommets that were going to suddenly?
But Mr. Valance, wasn't it your job to know?
No.
Wouldn't you have known if someone just dug into it and said, look, there's three or four of these grommets on top of the surface and we're digging through it now and it'll be churned up by use over time? And oh wow, we've found a lot more below the surface? Wouldn't that have just been a normal testing process before certification?
I don't know.
You had seen a lot of grommets in the stockpile.
I had seen grommets in it, yes.
Must have known they were also below the surface and would come to the surface during use.
Well, it depended how much work was done on removing the grommets before they were put into the arena, before that material was put into the arena.
But it seems like there's hundreds, maybe thousands of these things in there. The Geotech report said you'll never get rid of them. Karen Smith at Office of Sport now concedes you'll never get rid of all of them. Wasn't it sort of, you know, the needle in the haystack problem? You would never get every single one of these things out?
Unless you did a major.
Well, unless Barry Smith complied with the tender spec and actually delivered what he was paid to deliver.
That wasn't my area.
I know, but that's your assessment now of what, what happened? The only way of getting rid of all the grommets was Barry Smith to go back and start again, as Otto had to do at Wallaby Hill. They did it at Wallaby Hill, but apparently no one put any pressure or request or their own initiative to redo the failed surface at SaAC.
Yeah.
Right, so the taxpayer is lumbered with this problem, but down there at Wallaby Hill, they were straight in there to correct it for Alex Townsend, stockpile the material and send the problem to Horseley Park. That's what happened. Can I just ask, Mr. Valance, we heard evidence earlier on from Mr. Verway from Capricorn saying that the Technical Advisory Committee had no contact with him, is that right?
I certainly had no contact with him.
How, how were you able to make an assessment of his tender if you hadn't even spoken to him?
From the documentation he provided.
Right, but there was no need to follow up and ask any questions about that documentation? Oh, tenderers can provide a glowing set of materials about their own merit that once questioned starts to, you know, fall apart a bit. You never went through that process of interrogating the nature of the tender?
No.
And what about Barry Smith Motorsport? Was there a conversation with Barry Smith about his tender?
As I said, the first time I met Barry Smith was at this meeting after the contract had been awarded.
Or equestrian surfaces, the third tenderer, were they interviewed?
No.
No. And, and this meeting in, event at SaAC in January of 2018, what exactly was it? Because my understanding is that the major event that was coming up was the dressage event in May, an international dressage event in May of 2018. What was it in January, the event that was so pressing that the tight schedule, it was thought only Barry Smith could meet it?
I don't know.
You don't know? Ms. Seafried, do you know what it was in January 2018 at SaAC that, the event where people met each other and it was the one that was the, 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 the one that the tight schedule was aimed at?
No, I have no idea.
Could I ask, Miss Seafried, um, Miss Seafried, how did you get approached to serve on this committee?
I wasn't on the Technical Advisory Committee.
Okay, and you were, the role you played was to certify, is that correct?
I was asked by SaAC, Mark Bulcher from SaAC, the manager of SaAC, to come down and inspect the arena.
And this was after the installation?
Oh, well after the installation.
Okay.
Well after problems had surfaced.
Okay.
So this is years later?
Years later.
Right.
And so you, you, did you, you never actually yourself certified it as being fit for purpose at the point of installation?
No, I wasn't there at that time.
Yeah, and?
I wasn't involved in the tender process, nothing.
But your role was after the problems were discovered to provide advice as to how that should be, well, about its consequences?
No, not how to repair it. I was aware that there were grommets in the surface because I was judging at one competition where they were there. But I was purely as an official there, I wasn't technically contracted, if you like, to give any advice at that stage.
Okay.
That came much after, after improvements had been made.
Okay, so, but you as an official noticed that there were grommets in the site, that's correct?
Yes, and I'm trying to recall the year, I think it was 2019, maybe the national championships at that stage.
Okay, and was there concern amongst the users of the site about the grommets that you were aware of, or did you have any concerns?
I think it became common knowledge that we found them and because we walk across the arenas as officials and we saw them and picked them up. But I didn't hear of any welfare issues for horses in relation to that.
Okay.
My sport is dressage, I'm a dressage official, so I'm not a jumping official.
Okay, on balance, is it better to have grommets on sites or not?
Of course not.
Okay. And?
I think psychologically, it's not a good look.
Mr. Valance, can I just come back to the Technical Advisory Committee process? Did you have discussions with Stephen Dingwall, Dingwall about the Barry Smith tender?
No.
Or Peter Dingwall?
No.
No? And there was also confusion, and the Office of Sport still doesn't really know, that in serving on the Technical Advisory Committee, Mr. Farah lodged a declaration of interest, which was nil. But they can't find anything that you or Ms. Farrell lodged. Do you remember lodging a declaration of interest?
No, I don't, I don't know.
No, no one asked you if you've got any interests here you need to declare to make sure it's a clean?
Yeah, I understand what the conflict of interest is about. I can't recall having made that declaration.
And, and how would you describe your relationship with Stephen Dingwall?
When?
Well, at any time, for instance, did you approve his selection on the New South Wales State Jumping Squad?
No.
You didn't?
No, I was, I'm not a selector. At that stage, I wasn't a selector.
Right, you hadn't ever selected Stephen Dingwall for any position in the jumping fraternity?
As I said, I wasn't a selector.
Right, had you had any commercial contact or arrangements with Stephen Dingwall in any other way?
No.
How do, how do you explain in hindsight Barry Smith Motorsport getting this tender? And at the end of the day, wasn't this just a favour to Peter Dingwall that his son was doing the work?
I don't find that preposterous. I think that's ridiculous. I'm sorry.
It's not as ridiculous as what subsequently happened.
Mr. Valance, were you paid, by the way, to be on this committee?
Not on that committee. I was paid on, on the sign off. So it may well have been, yeah, I was paid by the Office of Sport through Jim Casiff.
And you were paid, as you understood it, was it certifying the site as fit for purpose, serving on the committee or both?
I would say both.
So you were paid?
Yes, yeah.
And the committee was paid, or paid? This wasn't a unique arrangement for you, to the best of your knowledge?
I don't know whether the other committee members were paid or not.
Okay, and you were recruited by Mr. Farah at this committee?
Maybe, I look, I simply don't know. I can't recall.
But you were approached by Mr. Farah at first instance to serve on the committee?
I think Bruce may have, when Oliver Holberg, who was the first choice, was asked to, to come and certify the arena and he was unable to do so, I think that's knowledge that the committee have. Bruce rang me at some stage and said, would you do it? And he nominated, or I've nominated you to sign off on it. You have the best credentials in Australia as far as, you know, arena surfaces and their fitness for purpose, particularly for, and this is particularly with jumping is because as I've said earlier, it is more demanding on the surface than the other disciplines.
Job, but he recruited you to certify the site, is that what you said, or to serve on the committee?
Serve on the committee. Jim Casiff was the one who?
Then asked you to certify the site?
Yes, yes.
How many meetings did the Technical Advisory Committee have?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe two, but I'm really only guessing, Mr. Latham.
In his emailed assessment to Mr. Casiff, Mr. Farah said that he thought Barry Smith Motorsport were, and I quote, "easy to do business with" and Capricorn were difficult. Was that raised at either of those meetings?
Not that I recall.
Right, and, and how could that assessment have been made about easy to do business with Barry Smith, but Capricorn were difficult? Was that your assessment also?
I was never asked.
Never asked, and it wasn't raised that you're meeting?
Not that I recall.
It came from Mr. Farah in his assessment to Mr. Casiff, but wasn't raised with the other two committee members?
I don't recall it being, being raised.
Mr. Seafried, could I just ask you to explain to us the certification of the remediation or the rectification, which I think is what you were involved in, is that correct?
Yes, I understand that the arena was rectified.
Yep.
And I was asked in my capacity as an experienced technical delegate to come down to Sydney and look at the arena and see it actually being used by some dressage horses. I looked at the indoor arena and the outdoor arena and I made an assessment at that stage.
And you felt that the site was significantly improved from your previous experience with it?
Significantly, significantly improved. And I think the management of, of the site at that stage impressed me because all of these arenas are not only dependent on the materials which are used in them, but the management process, especially with Ebb and Flow arenas, it had, you know, the outside climate has a big effect on them from day to day, even from during one day. Whether it rains or is it windy or the humidity, all of those sorts of things. So they're, they're not a set and forget type arena. They have to be managed, not only in the amount of water that's available, but also in how the surface is actually prepared through, you know, tractor machinery, grading machinery, et cetera.
And look?
I was quite impressed with the knowledge that the management team at SaAC had at that stage.
And this was after it was rectified?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, can I just ask, how does a site now compare to other sites that offer the similar services?
I think it's very comparable. And I think management has learned, they've built up a network of people that manage these types of arenas with the, the mats in them and the water supply. And I think they, they want to produce a top arena for performance.
So this, some of these questions might be obvious, but you're the expert, I'm not, so I'm just going to put these to you so you can give us your views on the record. But can I ask, is it fair to say that the Sydney International Equestrian Centre is a major equestrian site?
Yes.
And it's the principal international?
The major, the major sites in Australia.
And therefore, in order for it to be competitive globally, it has to have best standards? Do you agree with that?
It has to have top standards, otherwise competitors with riding equestrian athletes, which are very, you know? which are very, um, you know, um, top of their game, they can't afford to have an injury of the horse at all, and they will take measures not to have that happen. I was quite happy that horse welfare was being well looked after that time that I inspected it.
Yes, and this was after the site was remediated?
Totally after the site was remediated.
Yes.
And I was informed of what they had done to improve it.
Yes, uh, but do you agree that we were at risk of suffering reputational loss? Must say we, the state of New South Wales and hosting equestrian events was at risk of suffering, suffering a reputational loss uh, as a result of the incorrect installation that took place at first instance?
That's a difficult question to answer. Um, trust is always very difficult to draw back. And I think there may have been a situation when the arena was first put down and used, that trust started to decline. Um, I'm happy that there have been competitions, major competitions since that time, um, where the trust has returned.
But we did suffer, or we risked losing the trust, you would agree with that?
Yes, I think if, if the riders are all about surfaces and, um, they can sometimes use them as an excuse, but that their performance isn't good enough when the surface is totally okay. Um, but I think there was a period when, um, the reputation of that surface did decline.
Okay.
I think it's gone now, it's gone now, we've got two or three years on down the track now, and it's been used quite significantly since then, and there has been, to my knowledge, no complaint since.
Just something, I think I only have two more on this particular matter, but you agree that prior to the installation at first instance, that site was old and was requiring an upgrade?
It certainly was, it was, it had become, what one would say, old fashioned. Um, it didn't use the latest technology. Um, we have many international riders who have competed overseas and they knew exactly what a good service could produce. If I can make an example, um, before hockey got the, um, the, um, AstroTurf, hockey was a game about, you didn't know where the ball was going to bounce. Um, but once the AstroTurf came in, into major arenas for hockey, um, major fields, um, the sport improved from grassroots up. This is what's important for all equestrian sports too, because we're not only dealing with Olympic athlete horses, we're dealing with those horses which may become that, and we need to protect them. Horse welfare issues are extremely important from, for all levels.
And you agree therefore that the principal reason why the Office of Sport decided to provide the funding was to maintain the reputation of the Equestrian Centre and its ability to host international events?
Sorry, the funding for what in particular?
Well, to the best of your knowledge, the, the decision to provide funding to upgrade the arena was designed to make sure that the arena maintained its reputation internationally?
Yes, yes, it was, um, with all good intention. I think that was the decision to be made, that the surface needed changing and improving for, um, attracting all of the top competitors in Australia.
I guess my final question is, is it, do you, uh, as a, as a senior member of the equestrian community, uh, you agree that it was the expectation of the equestrian community that it would be getting a brand new surface?
Yes, it was. We were very excited about it, yeah.
I think that's it, um, for this particular panel, unless Mr. Malum, Mr. Ramado, or Ms. Moriarty have any questions? No? Thank you, um, we thank you, Mr. Valance, for your attendance in person, and you've, you and Mr. Valance have agreed to take some questions on notice, for which you will have twenty-one days to provide an answer. The secretary will provide you with a list of the questions. Mr. Phil, we also thank you for taking the time to join us online, and I don't think you did take any questions on notice. Um, so, uh, we're very appreciative of you making yourself available to assist the committee in its deliberations. We have four minutes before our next witness is due. Thank you for your attendance, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we can bring him in, we can get going, we'll just, um, we can swear him in and we'll wait for Mr. Latham to resume. Oh, he's a minister, of course. Well, um, we can admit him, and then as soon as Mr. Latham returns, we can proceed to an opening statement. I think, uh, why don't we go offline? Thank you, um, we welcome our next witness, who is, uh, the Honourable Geoff Lee, uh, the former Minister for Sport. Uh, Minister, as you are a serving member of the Parliament, you're not required to, uh, take an oath. Uh, you are giving evidence under your existing oath that you've already made to the Parliament, just to make that clear. We welcome you and we thank you for taking the time to spend with us this afternoon. Uh, can I invite you to make a short opening statement if you so wish?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moki, um, and thank you for the committee, um, and I'm here to obviously answer any questions, but thank you for the opportunity to make a short statement. Can I start off by saying I was first appointed as the Acting Sports Minister in the twentieth of September two thousand and nineteen? Um, I understand from my records, uh, from my recollections that on the twenty-fourth of the tenth, um, about a month later, the first complaint about the surface of the Equestrian Centre was received. Um, uh, can I say that under that time that there was a complaint, and it was drawn to my attention through, uh, through the Office of Sport, through the regular meetings I had with Karen Jones, the CEO, um, that there had been rubber, rubber grommets in the servicing sand that they put on that new equestrian centre. Over, over a period of about, uh, through December two thousand and nineteen to January two thousand and twenty, um, uh, we received a number of written complaints by Ms. Dawkins and Ms. Brooks. Um, and there were three formal letters of complaints that were sent to Ministers Doherty, but, but, uh, and C C to the Office of Sport. Um, and that, uh, obviously me as acting minister took those seriously. At, uh, at the time, the CEO, Karen Jones, briefed me on the issues, um, and the advised the, uh, correct course of action as she saw it. Um, I'd say that the number one priority obviously was, was safety. The number two priority was looking at, looking at the conflict of interest between Barry Smith Motorsport, who were the contractors, uh, to, uh, rectify. Um, the Office of Sport then indicated that the correct action was to sought remediation of that ground under the contract condition. Um, and I understand it was advised that between January and September two thousand and twenty, the contractor remediated the surface, no additional cost to the taxpayers. Um, going back to March two thousand and twenty, um, after briefing from the Office of Sport, we agreed that to engage, uh, O'Connell Masters, an independent probity officer, to review the tender process and review, uh, any unobliquated relationships that may or may not have existed, um, in, in terms of the tender awarding and the people involved on the tender panel. On the twenty-ninth of April two thousand and twenty, the, that probity officer, I refer to them as the O'Connell Marsden, Marsden, at the end, reporting that their, they, the process was completed, uh, and I, that the process complied with the procurement process, however, there were various areas that were identified that needed to be improvement. Um, and at that stage in the meeting, I asked Karen Jones, the CEO of Office of Sport, uh, refer the matter to ICAC in case there's any corrupt activities happening, uh, to have a look at the situation and provide all the documents, uh, including all the complaints that were made to, uh, the Office of Sport or my Office of Sport. Um, on the first, the twelfth, first of December two thousand and twenty, ICAC responded back to the Office of Sport. I think Karen Jones was, from memory, Karen Jones was the one that put in the complaint. Um, and the, um, ICAC was not going to investigate, but gave a series of recommendations to improve and strengthen our procurement process. Uh, from the start of two thousand and twenty to the start of two thousand and twenty-one, Ms. Dawkins and Ms. Brooks sent a number of, uh, uh, similar complaints, uh, similar in nature to obviously, uh, myself or the Office of Sport. Um, I understand, uh, as acting minister, I responded, um, and I, I'm happy to table the letter to Ms., um, I've got it here to Maggie Dawkins, I'll, I'll table that letter today. You should have it in your pack though, I'm sure, eleventh of February two thousand and twenty-one, where as response to the procurement process, our independent verification of the surface of independent assessors. Can I say that, uh, we then did, um, on March twenty-one, did an additional assessment where riders and equestrian experts came and had a look at the track, uh, they visited the site and confirmed that it was a world-class surface. Um, the Office of Sport has, during my time anyway, realised that there were some flaws, uh, in the tendering and procurement process, and has, has my understanding and my memory says that, uh, they rectified their tendering assessment process in line with the, uh, independent assessors, OCDM and ICAC recommendations. Uh, and by twenty-sixth of May two thousand and one, I stopped being sports minister. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Minister, we appreciate the, uh, thorough, uh, opening statement. One point you made is that you wished to table some letters, or, um, I think, so I'm advised we haven't received any. Um, but if your office is in a position to provide it or email it through to the committee secretary, that would be most helpful, uh, if they could do it.
I can do that, I can ask them to do it right now if you like.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because, um, we could probably use it in the questioning, um, but I appreciate that as well. And if there's a written copy of your opening statement as well, that might be helpful for hand side, if that can be emailed through as well, um, thank you. We'll go to questions, um, we've resolved as a committee, that's okay, don't mean, uh, we resolved as a committee that we'll be sharing the questioning, so, um, but as is custom, we'll begin with Mr. Latham.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Minister. Um, Minister, thanks for your opening statement, but, um, can I just ask when you, as the acting minister, first found out that the materials at Saic had come second-hand from the Wallaby Hill property of Alex Townsend?
Uh, I can't remember the exact date, uh, I think from memory, I was informed that the problem was the surface was refurbished, the material that they used had had was, um, had rubber grommets in there, from memory, that's, that's what I understood.
You would have been told at what, late twenty nineteen in these briefings from Karen Jones?
Uh, I would assume that in case, but I, I just can't put a date on it, um, around about, yeah, late, late twenty nineteen.
Right.
But I don't think there was, I don't think, I can't remember them actually saying this came from another property. Um, I thought the material was just, you know, had rubber grommets in there, I didn't ask for where the material came from. I, I had no knowledge of that.
Yeah, from our inquiries with this committee, that seems to be the major part of the scandal, that the second-hand materials have caused the ongoing problem to the point where the Geotech report and also in evidence Karen Jones has said, well, you'll never really get rid of the rubber grommets in there, so it'll something that's going to linger for quite some time. Um, why was O'Connell Marsden chosen as the, uh, probity investigators?
Uh, I can't answer that question, I, I, you know, when, when the Office of Sport recommended it, recommended and I agree with them to do an independent evaluation of the tender process and procurement process, uh, I, I, I don't want to presume, but I would, you know, I would, I would, uh, my conjecture is that we have a list of appropriate independent people that we go off.
So that was, that was a recommend, a recommendation to you from Karen Jones that we send this off to O'Connell Marsden to have a look at it?
No, no, I said we, well, there was probably discussions, I can't remember the exact discussion, it was two years ago, three years ago. Um, it would be certainly about, let's, you know, it would have been a recommendation, let's get someone independently to assess. And I said, okay, well, the Office of Sport can handle that independent assessment, I don't choose who our contractors are. You know, I, the department does that, as you know, ministers don't get involved in choosing individual contractors to do things.
And, um, what knowledge did you have of the terms of reference that were going to be sent to O'Connell Marsden for the probity investigation?
I can't remember seeing those terms of reference, um, they would have been discussed, um, I'm sure, but I, I can't remember those terms of reference, they would probably be discussed in a, in a weekly catch-up that we have, uh, with Karen Jones.
Right, and are you surprised now that, and look back on it with regret, that, um, the involvement of Alex Townsend wasn't part of the terms of reference to O'Connell Marsden?
Uh, I, I don't think I can make an informed comment about that in terms of, um, that wasn't brought to my attention, uh, the conflict of interest between the contractor and the person on the, um, on the tender panel, that I thought that was the, the main issue as far as I was concerned, and that resulted in, you know, the problems that we have with the grommets in there. And I was satisfied at that point from the information I had that the, the surface was remediated and that the, the other experts that we called in and said that the, um, surface was a world-class standard.
But do you acknowledge now it was an oversight in that, uh, the grommets came from Wallaby Hill, uh, a property owned by a member of the Board of Equestria New South Wales, where the president of that body, his son, was a financial beneficiary of doing the work and a financial beneficiary of moving this second-hand material to Saic?
So what was the question, sorry?
Well, the question is, do you believe it's an oversight that this major problem in the process, that the grommets came from Wallaby Hill, owned by Alex Townsend, uh, who was on the Board of Equestria New South Wales, where the president of that board, Mr. Dingwall, his son, is a major beneficiary financially of the, um, of the decision to source the material second-hand from Wallaby Hill? Shouldn't that have been referred to O'Connell Marsden as a matter of course?
Um, I would, if that information was known at the time, I'm sure that would have raised red flags and we would have done that. But to my knowledge and to my, best of my recollection, that was never brought up as an issue. Uh, the relationship between a member of the tender panel and the contractor was brought up to see whether that was, you know, potentially corrupt.
But that information was known at the time, well and truly known to the Office of Sport, because on the nineteenth of December two thousand and seventeen, um, Darren Crumpler from the Office of Sport was, um, emailing out and, and, and blowing the alarm on the fact that, um, what was being put down at Saic was second-hand material that came from Wallaby Hill. So by the time you sent the terms of reference to O'Connell Marsden in March of two thousand and twenty, it had been known for some two and a half years inside the Office of Sport that the problem of the grommets originated from the property of an equestrian New South Wales board member at Wallaby Hill. So why wasn't it referred on as part of the O'Connell Marsden terms of reference?
Well, as I said to you, I can't, uh, I can't respond on the Office of Sport, but I certainly can respond to the best of my knowledge, I had no idea that it was second-hand material from the son-in-law of the person on the board from Marsden, whatever hill it was. I had no idea that it was second-hand material from the son-in-law of the person on the board from Marsden, whatever he all was. I I just did not, that's, I mean, I can't, I can't look back and say, well, it's going to make a decision. Hindsight is a great thing. If I knew that then, I probably would have raised red flags.
But moments ago in your evidence, you said you were informed of that in your regular briefings with Karen Jones in the second half of twenty nineteen, so you did know.
Uh, no, I think what the the in- information was is that there were rubber grommets within the material. Now, I didn't inquire where the material came from, it that it actually came from a different source which was already contaminated. That's, you know, there were rubber grommets in there. I don't know where they sourced that material from. That was not my understanding of the issue at hand. The issue at hand was there were problems and that the tender process and procurement process were were um not robust enough.
But I asked you when you, I asked you when you first found out that these uh materials with the grommets came from Wallaby Hill and you said in the regular briefings with Karen Jones in the second half of twenty nineteen?
Oh, I'm sorry if I, if I, if I misled you in that way, but it was certainly my, uh, it was to the best of my ability, uh, Mr. Latham. There is, there was no suggestion of where the material came from. I understood it was just contaminated material.
So, looking at it now, it was a major oversight to not include this in the terms of reference to O'Connell Marsden. So they never reported on it. And then ICAC never had a chance to look at it either, did they? Because ICAC uh examined the O'Connell Marsden report and didn't go into the Alex Townsend connection. Is that right?
Uh, I. Look, I'm happy to accept that, uh, that if that was not examined, that material probably did flow to uh ICAC, but I would assume the Marsden report looked at all the different letters and not spotted the problem.
No, they didn't. They didn't have terms of reference. And if I can take you to the Office of Sport's submission to this inquiry written on the fourteenth of September twenty twenty one, uh, under your time as minister. It says on page sixty-eight, in relation to the suggestion that the use of the Wallaby Hill materials was due to Ms. Townsend being unsatisfied with the Wallaby Hill Farm Arena surface, and that the use of the Wallaby Hill materials was not disclosed, any issues surrounding this would need to be explored with Mr. Smith and Ms. Townsend. End of quote. Why didn't the Office of Sport um, um, examine and explore this Townsend connection and the impropriety therein by referring it off to O'Connell Marsden? And their report would have um looked at it and then been subject to ICAC investigation. How can the Office of Sport in September twenty twenty one say that the Townsend connection, well, you'll have to take that up with Smith and Townsend and nowhere else?
Well, I I'm sorry, I can't answer on behalf of what the Office of Sport submission is recalled. It was not brought to my to the best of my recollection, I cannot remember that issue being pressed with me. Uh, my issue was that the tender process and procurement had potential for corruption. And the the second issue was the surface was unsafe. Um, once I was satisfied, you know, that the surface had been remediated, um, and that we had independent people saying it's a world-class, that issue disappeared. The other one was the procurement, tender procurement and evaluation process was potentially flawed. Well, unfortunately, the conditions that it was set out before I was minister and agreed and accepted were too, were not robust enough. And that we, you know, we made sure that once we recognised those problems from the independent report and ICAC recommendations, we implemented those to make sure that this situation never happened again.
But Minister, you do accept that the original processes, as you put it, were not robust enough?
Uh, yeah, I think that's that's clearly stated in the uh independent report and ICAC report that the processes were not good enough.
And and just specifically, in terms of the processes that you that you accept were not good enough, um, do you, do you want to identify which part of the process you thought was most efficient as you saw it?
Uh, I, yeah, I can't remember all the different, one that springs to mind is the declaration of interests of of people on the tender panel. I think that was one of them. I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, that's fair.
You, you know, you can't assess, you can't assess logically, you know. The common sense test, you can't assess somebody's tender proposal that you have a relationship with uh without declaring it or solving yourself. I mean, I think that's pretty, but that's the one that that stands out to me, but it was so long ago, I I just don't have a memory of the exact uh uh recommendations and how we rectify, but certainly I was assured by the Office of Sport, you know, at that time that those processes were tightened up. Uh, and those procedures were changed and I felt this situation could never happen again.
Yeah, Minister, I I accept that that the conflict of interest point you're making there, but one of the issues that I guess this inquiry has surfaced and to be fair to the Office of Sport, they themselves now say, is it part of what was lacking in robustness, if we were to use those terms, was I guess the reliance on Equestria New South Wales to the extent to which it was to effectively guide them through this process? And uh, and to be fair to the Office of Sport, as they definitely say, there's so many sports like that they have to deal with, that they often do rely on the bodies and the peak bodies of sport organisations to assist them when it comes to specific technical rectifications. But do you accept that perhaps it was one of the, which was set up before your time as acting minister, was the decision to rely so much on Equestria New South Wales without necessarily checking whether Equestria New South Wales had the right policies in place was part of the reason that gave rise to the corruption risk?
I think it points to, well, I I think the end outcome is of this, that if you rely upon, and Mr. Mooki, um, that if you rely upon uh third parties or community-based organisations to run processes, uh, that has some inherent risk, uh, in terms of if their policies aren't and their procedures aren't robust enough. I think, uh, that that there is some level of um problems that could occur, and obviously did in in this case.
Mr. Mallard.
Uh, good afternoon, Minister. Um, let me just go over the timeline that you gave to us, which was quite comprehensive in your opening statement. Uh, and just to lead to my question. So just over a month after you became the acting minister for sport, and what other portfolio did you have at the same time? There was uh multiculturalism?
Lots of culture, seniors, veterans, uh, skills and tertiary education, and my favourite one was paramedic.
You must have been incredibly busy in terms of briefings and getting across all those various portfolios, but you, you, within four weeks of becoming the acting minister for sport, uh, um, Miss Jones brought to your attention uh this issue of the grommets, which you probably didn't know what they were at the time. We've got a comprehensive learning here of those. Um, and uh, if you look at that timeline, you you followed the advice of the 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 Department of Sport, appointed an independent review of the process, a few more complaints came in, but within in less than six months, you referred the matter to the ICAC, which is a pretty robust thing to do. Would you, you agree with that in terms of how you handled the process?
Or to the Office of Sport? Yeah, actually, like, did the minister refer it or was the Office of Sport?
Well, I've got those here. It was referred to the ICAC.
All right, look, there's a question I'm putting to the minister, because he did actually make the point earlier that the Office of Sport referred it. Did they do that on your behalf or did you ask or were you, did you make a separate reference?
I, from from the best of my knowledge, I said refer it to Karen. Can you refer it to the uh, the Miss Jones? Can you refer it to the uh ICAC to make sure that there's no corruption?
Yeah, the right, the right thing, a very robust thing for a minister to do. Um, so you've had the independent report, the uh Mc- McDonald, O'Connell Masters, then you referred to the ICAC. The ICAC said, um, they weren't going to do further investigation, but they made recommendations which are fairly parallel to the McConnell Masters recommendations in terms of strengthening it, and you implemented those those strengthening. So you you you, I mean, you're confident that the process from your office was comprehensive uh and and ethical and and um you you processed it in all the proper way?
Yes, I, Mr. Mallard, I'm confident that we followed the right procedure. Once the complaints were lodged, that we went through an independent process. We engaged an independent, you know, uh probity officer to look at the process and then we actually reported it to ICAC when we thought, you know, just to be doubly safe that we're not, um, you know, we're we're looking at every angle.
Okay, that's really what I wanted to re- reconfirm. Thank you.
Yeah, Minister, just on that, why do you think that the ICAC letter of the first of December twenty twenty makes no mention of Alex Townsend? And the fact that the second-hand material had come from the property of a board member of Equestria New South Wales as part of the work and finances of the son of the president of Equestria New South Wales?
Well, I I can't speculate on what uh ICAC puts in the the letters.
You can, you can speculate, can't you? Because there was no terms of reference about Alex Townsend to O'Connell Marsden, and that report was passed on to ICAC that clearly also didn't uh examine the Townsend connection. So these are only partial investigations, aren't they?
Uh, well, I I'm taking you for your word, Mr. Latham. As I said, my recollection of the terms of reference, I can't recall those terms, but I mean, you would have those in front of you. I don't think you need me to ask the question. I.
Well, I'm just just confirming that that is the case, as you were the responsible minister. In the briefings you received from Karen Jones, did she make any mention of this uh meeting in early twenty eighteen or anyone else in the Office of Sport where uh Mr. Valance earlier on in giving the technical certification to the arena at Saic, um, was told by a senior uh Office of Sport official, um, possibly Matt Miller. Um, that was one that he left open, that the real objective here was to make sure that Alan Jones, the radio broadcaster, didn't find out that the materials at Saic were second-hand coming from Wallaby Hill. Doesn't that point to uh 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 thinking of of cover-up? And um lack of transparency by the Office of Sport right there at the moment when the surface was certified?
Uh, can I say that to the best of my knowledge, Karen Jones never briefed me on those particular accusations that you put there.
Yeah, and was Matt Miller gone by the time you became acting minister?
Yes.
He was. Okay. Um, and finally, knowing what we now know, isn't, wasn't there an argument, especially given the Alex Townsend corruption, uh, connection and what's going on there, that this should have been referred to the police?
Uh, I think, you know, uh, in hindsight, that looking back at the time, it really never occurred to us uh that it was the police matter.
Mr. One of the.
Okay, good, yeah.
I I accept this might not have been discovered through the O'Connell Marsden process. Um, but do you accept that uh an O'Connell Marsden independent review uh didn't have, uh, well, I guess, well, sorry, let me rephrase. Um, what was your understanding of O'Connell Marsden's powers here? Was it to review the conduct of the Office of Sport or to review the conduct of Equestria New South Wales or both?
Uh, to look at, from memory, and this, as you said, uh, this, as I've said before, this goes back probably years now, um, certainly look at the tender process and procurement process and the potential conflict of interest uh in the awarding and management, awarding of the contract.
Okay, but you accept the contract was let by the Office of Sport, correct?
Uh, I assume so, but that was before my time. There there must have been a contract. I had no dealings with the contract in a sense that I think it was just, I have something to use to seventeen, I think.
Yeah, okay. And uh just so, what seems to be apparent is that um, there certainly is enough, I guess. I mean, I don't want to unleash to conclusions before the committee's deliberated, but there certainly, we've had evidence that would point to fraud, namely on the part of the contractor in substituting materials. Um, and what I'm trying to understand is that, um, how was it, did you, did you have any knowledge or forewarning of that at the time or not?
No, it was never, never brought to my attention that there was a potential for fraud, uh, you know.
And what I'm, uh, look, the reason I ask, Mr. Minister, is because uh, the way in which the O'Connell Marsden investigation was set up is that they really weren't in a position to discover that. Um, because if they were only reviewing the Office of Sport, they would have, they would have lacked the power to write questions to Mr. Smith or others. And um, one of the issues that we were interrogating the Office of Sport as to why, I guess, they didn't immediately seek to go to police, given that the only people who did really have the ability to do that was police or for that matter the ICAC. Um, but that was never contemplated as your evidence.
Yeah, I see, I see.
Yeah, uh, it was never brought to my attention that there was a breach of contact, a breach of the contract besides the um included in the file of material, the rubber grommets in the sand that they put out, or the fueling that they put down and as well.
Oh, we've suffered a technical difficulty.
Just that's a critical piece of information.
Oil poise. Is it on our end or?
No problem.
Okay, we're back online. Minister, I think you were, we lost you at the point where you were saying, I think at that time you didn't have evidence of fraud before you.
Yes, it was never indicated it was fraud, as you would realise that if contractual matters of the delivery of uh any of these projects is managed by the Office of Sport or the by the contractor, um, it's not managed by the ministerial office, so they look at the contracts, make sure that they've uh put the right depth or whatever. We we rely upon the, you know, the department to do that sort of thing.
So when you received the O'Connell Marsden report, you you said that that report had identified officially deficiencies. Uh, what directions did you give the Office of Sport and according to what timeline in, when it comes to rectification of their process deficiencies?
Well, um, to the best of my knowledge, I directed them. I said, just for, you know, they briefed me about what the report said, and I said, well, we've got to follow all those, just implement the change to make it more robust.
Did they provide you with the report?
What they provided, um, I'm sure they provided my office with the report.
Okay, and you presumably read it or your office did?
I had a brief look at it. Uh, I'm sure someone in my office had a look at it.
Okay, and then what steps did you take to monitor whether or not the Office of Sport had in fact implemented the recommendations?
Uh, certainly, I was brought up with more Karen Jones, asking her whether the the recommendations are implemented. Um, and from memory, it was quite a while ago, as I said, um, but certainly the ICAC recommendations were similar in nature in that, you know, and that the processes were tightened up and more robust so that we get the right outcomes.
Okay. Do we have further questions? Does Mr. Mallard or Mr. Ramato have any further questions?
No, we're, no, I'll go first. I think the minister's.
Thank you. Minister, we appreciate the time that you have spent with us this morning. Um, I don't believe you did take any questions on notice. Um, we thank you also to your office for providing us with the documents that you had tabled uh as quickly as you did. Um, thank you very much for your spending some time um with us this morning. You are, of course, excused. Um, we have fifteen minutes until our next witness is due to appear unless they're present. They're in the rat testing day, so I think at this point we will adjourn for fifteen minutes and we resume at twelve forty-five uh as well. And I'll just note that I'll pass to the appointed deputy chair from this point on.
Yeah, I agree. You're leaving, yeah.
Welcome back everybody to the final witness for today's hearing. Mr Dingwall, if you could please state your full name, position title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
I'm sorry, what was the second thing?
Your full name, your title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Peter Jeffrey Dingwall, no title. I solemnly, sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your attendance today. We will open questions perhaps with Mr Latham.
Thanks, Mr Dingwall, for your attendance.
Sorry, actually my apologies, Mr Dingwall, did you want to make an opening statement?
No, I don't think I need to make an opening statement. I provided the committee with a very full statutory declaration. There's nothing I could add to that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr Latham.
I take it the committee has read that?
Yep, yep, indeed. Mr Dingwall, we've not only read your submission but also hoping that you've heard some of the evidence through the two days of hearing, which I suppose in one part reflects dreadfully on the process by which this grant was allocated.
Well, you're making assertions there which aren't necessarily correct.
How do you think it's been a good process for the taxpayer of New South Wales?
I'd just rather answer questions. If that's the question, I think it's been a very good outcome. There's a world-class equestrian centre with a world-class arena there now, which has been favourably received by all top elite athletes.
And you don't see an ongoing problem that these rubber grommets, plastic materials, can never be removed from the surface and the surface was a second-hand material outside the terms of the tender, so non-compliance with a very expensive tender, dragging up second-hand materials from Wallaby Hill from one of the properties of one of your board members at Equestria New South Wales?
You've got several assertions in there and I have to try and deal with one in turn. You'll have to go back, you've put so much in that question. What's the first proposition you're putting for me?
Well, it's been admitted in the Geotech report and also by the Office of Sport, they can never get rid of the rubber grommets that are in the material. And, Mr Dingwall, whether you like it or not, some equestrian riders and users don't like the idea of their horses shying away from these foreign objects in the surface.
Well, I've never heard any equestrians say that. If you have any statement from an equestrian that said that, I'd be interested to see, but I've never heard a single competitor make such an assertion.
You don't see a problem with horses shying away from these rubber grommets, which seemingly will always be in the surface?
I've never heard of horses shying away from rubber grommets. There are a lot of services that have rubber in them.
Yeah, well, you should read the submissions to this inquiry and all the correspondence that went through.
Whose submission are you referring to?
Well, there's a whole range of them.
If you're referring to submissions from people who have never seen the surface, who live in other states, then you can place what weight you like on that, but the people who actually compete there have not made any complaints about horses shying away.
And do you think the reputation of Equestria New South Wales has suffered heavily in this process?
No.
You don't? How do you think it's been a good reflection that the CEO of Equestria New South Wales was an instigator of the grant, involved in every step of the way, never declared an interest in the financial benefit to your son Stephen?
Well, I can stop you there because you've repeated that several times during these hearings. You have no evidence, you cannot have any evidence, my son obtained any financial benefit from this, that is false. Whoever is giving you that information is false. There is no evidence my son received any financial benefit from this project.
Does your son work for Barry Smith Motorsport? Has never worked for them?
I've asked him since this inquiry commenced, I didn't ask him before, he has never worked for him. He occasionally has done some subcontract work for him on a piecemeal basis, but he doesn't work for Barry Smith Motorsport.
Was he involved in the Barry Smith Motorsport contract for the Saic?
Not that I'm aware of.
Had no involvement in it whatsoever?
Not that I'm aware of.
What is the subcontracting he's done for Barry Smith Motorsport?
From what he told me after the event, he did go down to Saic to help groom the arena and to help the staff at the arena to teach them how to properly maintain the arena.
So that's an involvement in this project and he was paid for that?
Subsequent to the project. I don't know if he was paid for or not.
Well, he wasn't there doing it for love, was he?
I don't know. He may have been paid something to go down, I don't know.
Okay, well you know you're under oath here.
I wish you wouldn't put that to me, I know what an oath is, don't you worry.
Yeah, and why then would you say that your son's never worked for Barry Smith Motorsport and then say, well, he's been a subcontractor, he's been a subcontractor to his father-in-law and involved in this particular project at Oarsley Park, why would you?
That he was not an employee of Barry Smith, nor as one of your informants suggested, was he a manager? But prior to this, I had no idea what his involvement was with Barry Smith, only subsequently. When I asked him, he said he'd done some subcontract work.
Why would you say he received no financial benefit in working for Barry Smith Motorsport when you then say he went to this site and worked there as a subcontractor?
I didn't say that. I said he received no financial benefit from this contract.
And why do you think your son refused to give evidence here?
I wasn't aware he refused to give evidence.
Invited and refused to attend.
Well, it's a matter for him, probably thought there was no point in wasting his time.
Okay, and furthermore, the fact that your former CEO, because you're no longer the president, tipped off Barry Smith Motorsport about the likely cost, was involved on a technical advisory committee, we've heard from John Valance how bad that was, that became part of the decision to award it to Barry Smith Motorsport, and the fact that the process was so shoddy and the end result has been so controversial in the equestrian community, hasn't Equestria New South Wales suffered hugely out of this, particularly given the fact that the materials ended up again with some financial benefit for Alex Townsend coming up from her property at Wallaby Hill?
Well, again, you make a whole host of assertions there, many of them are wrong. Equestria New South Wales' reputation has not been diminished amongst its large membership. It may have been diminished amongst those three or four people who communicate with you, but not across the wide equestrian community in New South Wales.
Have you read the ICAC letter to Karen James of the 1st of December 2020?
Yes.
And you think there's no adverse reflection there on the role of Equestria New South Wales and Bruce Farah?
I wouldn't call it adverse, I think they suggested it might have been better managed.
Okay, and point two, they say Mr Farah appears to have been afforded as any amount of involvement in the process in the absence of a formal arrangement, including a clear description of his duties. It's some concern that the Office of Sport was unable to comment on whether some of Mr Farah's actions were the norm for the role he was performing, especially on behalf of the Office of Sport. It goes on to say, Mr Farah approached Barry Smith Motorsport prior to the release of the tender to obtain a funding estimate to include in the proposal. This could be perceived as a tenderer with links to Equestria New South Wales being given advance notice of the tender and the scope. When you were president of Equestria New South Wales, did you take any action against Mr Farah, given this severe criticism by the ICAC?
No, we saw no need to.
Why is that?
There was no need to, there was nothing untoward in what he did.
No, you disagree with the ICAC findings?
The ICAC simply says from the point of view of the Office of Sport, it could have been better handled from a question New South Wales' point of view, nothing for us to comment on.
And point eight, they say Mr Farah appears to have been responsible for conducting and/or relaying advice to the outcome of the surface test to the Office of Sport. Given that the quality issues that have become known, Mr Farah's involvement is likely to have been another contributing factor to the perception that Equestria New South Wales was partial to Barry Smith Motorsport.
Well, they said a perception, that's what I mean, they said it probably wasn't managed. Perception isn't reality though.
Well, it goes to your reputation and that's what I was asking about, that Equestria New South Wales has taken a reputational hit.
You assert that, but I disagree with that.
Okay, well, I'm just quoting from the independent ICAC assessment of half of this problem, Mr Farah's.
I'm not sure that they said anything about reputational damage in that.
The Alex Townsend connection wasn't even examined by O'Connor Marsden or ICAC, but maybe the committee will make recommendations on that. What discussions did you have with Mr Farah about this particular grant?
None beyond what we discussed in the meetings. First meeting when we gave them approval to make the submission for funding, their RT kept us informed at monthly meetings as to where the thing had progressed or not progressed, to the point where the submission was complete, submitted, we then were reported back on when that was likely to, the funding was likely to come through if at all, and then we were simply told it had been approved and it was going out to tender.
And at no stage did you declare an interest that your son was a subcontractor to Barry Smith Motorsport or that your son was closely related to Barry Smith in the conduct of the awarding of the contract?
A, I wasn't even aware, from my understanding, he wasn't a subcontractor at that time. He was of course related, but I had no reason to declare any conflict of interest.
No, you don't think a relationship, a family relationship's a reason for declaring a conflict of interest to your board?
But was there a conflict of interest to the board? The board wasn't making any decision other than noting that money had been provided and the Office of Sport would now take it on and put the matter out of tender.
Well, the board CEO was excessively involved in the process for the drawing up of the specifications, the awarding of the contract.
I was not aware of any of that.
No?
No.
Are you surprised that so many people in this so-called close-knit equestrian community know nothing, or say they're surprised to hear things that one would have thought were obvious in the knowledge of that community?
I can't comment on what people think or don't think, what might surprise them or not surprise them.
Okay, has Equestria New South Wales responded to the ICAC and rebutted any of these points?
No, haven't been invited to, we didn't see any need to either.
And did you have any discussions with Mr Farah at any stage about the importance of Barry Smith Motorsport receiving the contract?
Not at all.
No discussions at all?
Not at all.
Did Mr Farah ever tell you that they had received the contract?
No.
No?
I knew after the event.
Well, wouldn't he report back to the board as a matter of course about all the activities he's engaged in to ensure that Barry Smith receives the contract?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't he report back to the board as to who had won the contract and the role that he'd played?
I don't recall if he did report back to the board. Our last meeting, sorry, I've got it here, so in October of 2017, he reported that he'd been informed by employees of the Office of Sport, the invitation to tender had been issued for a planned upgrade of the indoor arena in January 2018. At the board meeting held on 27 November 2017, Mr Farah reported that Auto Sport had been successful tenderer and that work on the upgrading of the arena had commenced and would be completed in January 2018.
And what was the event, to your knowledge, in January 2018 that was so important for expediting the work and giving it to Barry Smith Motorsport against the recommendations of the tender evaluation committee?
You've thrown into your question a whole number of assertions, but the question simply is, I take it, what was the event? My recollection was, it was a show horse event to be run by the Australasian Show Horse Council, who's not a member of Equestria New South Wales, is a separate show horse body in Australia. My recollection was they had a booking for January for their big show.
Why was that so important? Why do you need a new surface for showing horses as opposed to a jumping event?
It wasn't so much, as I understand, needing a new surface, but the work had to be done before that event could commence. Otherwise, the whole timetable for all the subsequent events would be put out of kilter.
There was no other place in Saic where they could do their showing of the horses at this particular arena?
From my recollection, they had it booked, they have a regular booking, an annual booking for that particular show, that's my recollection.
Right, so what you're saying to this committee is that this process unfolded and Barry Smith Motorsport received the contract to expedite the work for the keeping of bookings at Saic rather than the necessary upgrading of a surface for jumping?
My recollection wasn't just for jumping, it was to upgrade it, but because of the timeframes involved, with the bookings throughout the year, and this particular one in January from my recollection, I think it was show horse, the desired time was to get it done in that period prior to that show.
Thank you. I might ask you, sir, will you, excuse my not being across the dates, you were president of Equestria New South Wales and chair of the board when the matter was referred to the ICIC by the Department of Sport? What I'm getting at is, were you there when the report came back?
Yes, I think I was, yeah.
Okay.
I was there until the end of 2020.
I think there's general consensus from most of the stakeholders that we've heard from that the recommendations to the ICIC were good recommendations in terms of implementing some stronger robustness around that, would you agree with that?
Well, from what little I know...
Robustness around the tender process and...
From what little I know of the tender process, I can only say yes, that any recommendations to change, to improve, it must be beneficial.
Particularly from a body like the ICIC, which deals across the whole spectrum of government.
Yeah.
Did your board consider the report, the ICIC report, just as a matter of principle to look at those issues?
I'm not sure we have looked at it as an agenda item, I'm sure we received a copy of it, I just don't recall us ever actually discussing it as an agenda item.
I mean, this is singling out of Equestria New South Wales' particular tender, but the ICIC recommendation applies across the entire, well, the sporting organisations that the Office of Sport administers so many different organisations, so what's highlighted here is probably not unique to your organisation in terms of tightening up those tender processes.
I don't know, but that was really all a matter for the Office of Sport to address, not for Equestria New South Wales to address.
Yeah, and by and large, everyone involved in your board and stuff was in the sector, but by and large, the commitment, involvement in terms of Equestria New South Wales and board positions, that's all honorary and commitment and passion to the sport of equestrian horses.
Totally voluntary, unpaid.
Okay, Mr Latham, have you got any more questions?
No, no, I exhausted my...
Is there any more you'd like to add or anything you'd like to correct you feel needs to be said, Mr Dingwall? Am I inviting you to a...
Not from my point of view, there have been, in some of the debate I've watched and the questioning I've watched, a number of factual areas have crept in, some misunderstanding amongst some members of the board, not deliberately, but because...
Anything you feel, you have a different view to, you're welcome to write to the committee and point those differences out and we'll decide whether or not to publish them.
Yeah.
We often do, so I invite you to do that, but we have a due process for witnesses and you're entitled to do that and invite you to do that.
I suppose the only other comment I would make is this term conflict of interest is thrown about quite readily nowadays.
Yeah, I know.
I would invite the committee to actually examine what a conflict of interest is, particularly in the line of the ICAC guidelines, and if you read those, I would think that you'd come to the conclusion that I wasn't within a bull's roar of a conflict of interest.
And there are different standards of conflict of interest, we are subject to quite a serious standard of conflict of interest in terms of parliament and former councillor, I can assure you, but that's...
My former occupation also taught me a lot about conflict of interest.
And what was that?
A magistrate.
A magistrate, there you go, we wouldn't question you then on that one. That concludes my line of questioning.
Okay, any other questions from any other members?
Well, I suppose I'd just come to point seven of the ICAC letter if I could, thanks. There's the issue of clearly documented conflict of interest declarations appears to be a widespread one, having regard to the Office of Sport being unable to confirm whether or not former CEO Matt Miller declared his appointment on the selection committee of the Equestria New South Wales Board. Why did the board bring on Matt Miller to vet the sort of person who might be a candidate for board membership?
Well, can we just examine the timelines there? Mr Miller was invited on the nominations board well after the ICAC, well after the arena had been upgraded and the contract had been intended, et cetera. Mr Miller is a person very, very well experienced in sports administration, governance, et cetera, and we were introducing the nominations committee, we'd attempted to have nominations committee in the past, but we hadn't really progressed very far, we wanted someone of Mr Miller's experience and capabilities to chair that nominations committee, to assist us in getting a very capable and multipurpose board, if you like.
Right, and was that a voluntary position?
Yes.
Or was there payment for going to meetings?
No, no.
Was there any other time Mr Miller was, received a stipend from Equestria New South Wales for services under your presidency or...
No, not at all.
But it does indicate that, I think the concern of ICAC was that Mr Miller in running all the sports in New South Wales, why would you jump in and play this special role with Equestria, indicating a pretty close relationship?
We'd have to look at the actual times, I'm not sure Mr Miller was still in charge of the sport when he came onto the nominations committee.
Right, how many other former Office of Sport officials have you invited for these kind of roles?
I can't recall inviting any of it because that was the first occasion, my recollection, we convened a nominations committee.
Okay, thank you.
But I think we need to just check when Mr Miller left Office of Sport, I'm not sure of it, but my impression is that he, by that stage, he was no longer in the Office of Sport.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the committee, thank you for your attendance today, Mr Dingwall, we appreciate it. You are now dismissed.
Thank you.
And that actually concludes our hearing for today. Thank you everybody for your participation.